Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. You can join the meeting in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive and also access the meeting via the livestream on the city's website. We welcome public participation, including public comments on cases. At this time, if you'll join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Beal, would you please call roll this evening?
Mr. Snare.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
And we'd like to excuse Mr. Supalack and Mr. Grimes this evening. At this time, we have some documentation that we are looking to accept into the record for this meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the documentation? If so, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second, Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
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 Yes. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to City Council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, City Council will receive a recommendation from the Commission. In other cases, the Commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the Commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the meeting chair. The rules and regulation of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. The agenda was amended in advance of tonight's meeting to postpone an informal review application for development of a residential neighborhood east of Cos Gray Road. We have no items eligible for the consent agenda tonight, although we do have a request to postpone case 1, 21-152 ADM-C residential development standards to the November 4, 2021 meeting. At this time, anyone who intends to address the Commission on any of the cases this evening, will you please stand? Raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to the Commission in your testimony to the Commission? Thank you all. We will move on to case two. Actually, technically, this is case eight. Bremley Estates at PID 273-012584, 21157 INF for an informal review. This application is a request for the subdivision of 4.7 acres to facilitate development of four single-family lots, 0.51 acres of open space, and dedication of a right-of-way for cul-de-sac. The site is zoned limited suburban residential district and is north of the intersection of Nature Drive with Forest Run Drive. Mr. Hanzel, I will turn the time over to you for our presentation.
Great, thank you very much. This is Chase Ridge's case, but I'll be taking over for him tonight since he is absent. But good evening. This is a request for non-binding feedback for an informal review of Bremley Estates. This site is highlighted in yellow on your screen, and it is located within the City of Dublin. The site is 4.7 acres in size and is zoned R2, which is the limited suburban residential district. The site is currently vacant and is sited north of the Woods of Indian Run Planning and Development District. To the east, west, and north would be Washington Township, so those sites are currently not within the city's purview or within their jurisdiction. To the east of the site, so to the right on the screen, you're going to see some red and blue outline, which signal the floodplain limits that are within the site. So a bit of background regarding this site. It was before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council back in 2014 for a rezoning and a preliminary plat. Both of these items were approved by City Council in 2014. The rezoning was approved to zone the site from R, which would be rural, to the R2 Limited Suburban Residential District, which is the current zoning for this site. Additionally, preliminary plat, which is shown on the screen, was approved by City Council establishing four lots, as well as the extension of Nature Drive from the current stub at the south property line all the way to the northern property line, where it would also stub for future development. The extension of Nature Drive was to prepare for the future development to the north of the site. It should be noted that Planning and Zoning Commission, if you, in the history that was provided in your packets, Planning and Zoning Commission added a condition of approval with the preliminary plat stating that the applicant included a note on the final plat stating that the Nature Drive may extend further north should adjacent land develop. So this was a condition that was applied by Planning and Zoning Commission for this specific plat. The final plat was not pursued, so hence why the site is currently vacant. As shown on the screen is the community plan map. It does, highlighted is the site, and it is designated for suburban residential low-density. This designation allows for one to two dwellings per acre with the average lot size of about 0.25 acre per lot. So Woods of Indian Run, located just south, is also designated this. The current lots adjacent to this site are 0.25 acres in size to 0.32 acres, so they do meet within this designation. Shown on the screen is the proposed plat for Bremley Estates. Similar to the previous proposal in 2014, they are requesting, they are proposing four single-family lots. These lots vary in size between 0.5 acres and 1.38 acre in size. They also call for the extension of Nature Drive as their sole access. However, differing from the previous approval in 2014, they are proposing to terminate the Nature Drive extension into a cul-de-sac. Additionally, you'll see Lot 4, which is shown in the top right or the northeast corner of the site plan, that is their open space. It is a passive open space that does not provide any amenity. It does include their stormwater basin, as well as the limits of the floodplain. It should be noted that should this go forward in a formal matter, they would need to change the name to, from Lot 4 to an open space reserve. With development or residential development proposals, planning and engineering staff have generally recommended that site layouts accommodate future internal street connections in order to promote connectivity, trip distribution, and preserve capacity of main thoroughfares. Common practice in the city is to have the appropriate infrastructure in place to create future consistency and connectedness throughout the many residential subdivisions within the city. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission consider tonight whether the cul-de-sac, terminating at the center of the site, or whether the extension of Nature Drive to the north property line would be more appropriate. It should be noted that the access to, access to utilities for that northern site would come through Nature Drive here, so engineering would require that water and sewer utilities be extended to the north property line. As this is a standard zoning, should be noted that should this application move forward, all that the Planning and Zoning Commission would have purview over is the preliminary and final plat, and those would be recommended to City Council for approval or disapproval. So shown are the R2 zoning district development standards. These lots would be required to meet the minimum standards that are listed on the screen. So provided on the screen are discussion questions for our commission tonight. There are three questions, with the fourth being any other considerations that we have. The first discussion question is, is the commission supportive of the layout of lots and varying sizes of the lots? Second question is, is the commission supportive of the proposed open space reserve location and programming? And then the third question being regarding the Nature Drive extension as to whether a cul-de-sac bulb or the extension of Nature Drive to the northern property line would be appropriate. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff. Otherwise, our applicant is here to address any questions, concerns you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to the Commission, any questions for staff at this time? Ms. Fox.
Could you put back up the, the original preliminary plat? I don't think that was in our packet, and so I have never seen that that I'm aware On this one, on the preliminary plat, which had a condition when it was, when it was reviewed by council and planning and zoning previously, they talked not only about the Nature Drive, but they also talked about a bio-swale. And so I, there wasn't a mention of that in this plat. Can, is there a, maybe, yeah, thanks.
Hello, Mr. Hendershot.
Yeah, the proposal in 2014, the stormwater management for that proposal was a bio-retention basin area, which looking up at the screen is at the top right, which was separate or different from what's being proposed now. At the time, that was being proposed within easements on private property. The city's opinion or recommendation at the staff level is to have that within a specific reserve and not on private property. The applicant is showing, I believe, a detention basin, which is a dry basin, but those are details that we would further work through should this application move forward.
And that, that dry basin, we've talked about dry basins before. Size-wise, is that very large? I know it said that there wouldn't be much water in it, but we've talked about the fact of the unattractiveness of these dry basins.
Right, and we've had a lot of discussions internally with the city engineer about those and just kind of the nuisance that those have with mosquitoes. So ideally, we would try to push for a different stormwater management control measure, but a dry basin is something that's permitted within our stormwater management design manual. So we would work with the applicant to try to minimize kind of the nuisance component of dry basins if that's something that is proposed to move forward.
What are the other options?
They could do a wet basin, bio-retention basin is another option, a rain garden is another option that's available to them. Other measures within our design manual is underground storage, which typically we don't see for residential developments, but that is something that's allowable per our design manual.
Is, is, like a rain garden, for instance, or a wet basin, cost-wise, are those all about the same? I mean, I mean, are there, we see these dry basins a lot.
Right.
They're not very attractive. They do tend to be mucky sometimes.
Right, so yeah, I'd say a wet basin's a little bit more expensive than the dry basin. I think from a maintenance standpoint, I think the dry basins is just easier because you don't have kind of the water component, the permanent pool of water to maintain. But again, I would argue the, the dry basins aren't extremely attractive, so the wet basins, in my opinion, would be more preferable. But again, those are, both of those are approvable options per our design manual.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
One follow-up question, and we can talk to the applicant if you don't know the answer to this. Is there any proposed association? Are they going to dedicate this open space? Presumably, I understand we're in formal review, just trying to see if there has been discussion thus far.
Right, so I'll let the applicant touch more on that in more detail, but from the city, at least staff standpoint, for reserves, typically, we recommend that being city-owned reserves, and then the stormwater functionality of basins be the city to maintain, but then the, the open space around, it kind of, it's a case-by-case basis, but some of the time that's the HOA that would be maintaining that. But the stormwater functionality component of that would be city maintained, at least that's staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just one more. Maintenance for a dry basin versus maintenance for a wet basin for the city?
So the, the bigger component for a wet basin is kind of long-term dredging the pond, so we're kind of seeing that with a lot of these older basins, and that's a more significant cost. So I would say, you know, the lifespan of a wet basin, there is more maintenance cost. Dry basins, obviously, you don't have the water component to deal with as far as dredging out a pond, so there is more maintenance and cost associated with a wet basin compared to a dry basin.
Mr. Way.
Again, looking at the drawing that's up on the screen right now, the basin that was originally proposed looks like it's bigger than the one that's proposed now. Is, is there a reason for that?
So we're at the informal step, so we have not seen any formal stormwater management calculations, so we can't really verify if the sizing of that is adequate. So again, if this were to move forward, we would get into more of those details, calculations, to make sure this is adequately sized. Another part of that, if you look at the, the configuration of what they're calling a lot, which needs to be a reserve, we want to make sure we work with them to make sure there's enough distance for us to get back there and maintain. I think another part of the discussion is, is that an open space? Is that supposed to serve more of a purpose than just stormwater management? The way that it's laid out currently seems like it's solely for stormwater management. I think that was one of the discussion questions. We'd like to get feedback from the Commission of the use of that open space, because the way that it's laid out now, it's really just kind of bare bones for the stormwater management basin and access to get back there.
So, so is it likely that the open space reserve or the Lot 4 might have to get bigger because the size of the basin might need to be increased?
Potentially, yes, because the basin needs to be fully within the reserve space.
So, follow on to the comment you just made. So the 20-foot easement that, that's open space, that's kind of connecting the open space back to a public right-of-way, I assume, is that the rationale?
Are you referring to the 2014 proposal or the current proposal?
Ah, the current proposal.
So the current proposal, that's actually a lot. So that 20-foot dimension that's shown on the screen there with the hatching, that's actually a lot, a reserve. It's called Lot 4, but that should be called a reserve, so that is an actual separate parcel that has that dimension there. That's not an easement.
But it's part of the open space calculation, right? Correct?
I believe so, yes. Yes.
And is it the intention that that might be a pathway that would link back to the open space?
I think that's part of the discussion, what's the intent of the reserve? Is it supposed to be an active open space for more than just stormwater management? So I think that's where we like to get feedback from the Commission on that.
And, and my last question is, is, again, there's a, there's a City of Dublin trail system, either existing and proposed. Does this at all link to any proposed trail system in this area?
The way that this is proposed, there is not an opportunity to connect through here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Fish.
Yeah, just quick, as long as we're on the basin, the, you said that they're, they dry require a lot less maintenance, and do you think it's because we don't maintain them? If you drive around Dublin and you see dry basins, unless they're on private property, in many cases, they're just mowed, they're sodded and mowed, and they're still wet and mosquito things. And, and where they're not, where they're, Dublin, Dublin's a great place, so they do great maintenance. Ours are certainly better than the ones I see in other areas, but they're filled with weeds and, and mosquitoes and, and so on. So if you maintain those, like we do the wet ones, we probably, would probably equal that, because they, they probably have to be cleaned every couple of weeks and, and seeded and planted and so on, so.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's just the dredging of a wet basin, there's a significant cost to that, which is something 20, 30 years down the road, which we're, we're finding that isn't necessarily planned for by HOAs that we're running into. So that is a significant cost that's incurred further of the lifespan of a wet basin, where you don't necessarily have that significant of a cost for a dry basin because you're not dealing with the water component.
Is, this one's going to be owned by the HOA? I thought it was, I thought it was the city.
Well, it's all to be determined. Staff's recommendation would be for the reserve to be owned by the City of Dublin, which is consistent with previous development proposals for residential developments, with the city taking over maintenance responsibility of just the stormwater functionality of the basin. And then I think that's just part of whatever the development proposal, whether the city would be responsible for maintenance of the rest of the reserve, or if that's something the HOA would be responsible for. I think those are all questions still to be determined.
We can discuss that with the developer, I guess, but.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have the applicant here?
I'm Mike Close, 70, oh, I almost gave my old address. I just moved. 5622 Preston Millway, Dublin, Ohio, the attorney for the applicant. I have with me tonight also RJ Sabatino, who can address some of the issues regarding things you've asked about the wastewater or the retention and so forth, and a representative from Romanelli and Hughes. I'm not sure whether the neighbors of all signed in, but there are some neighbors that would like to weigh in on this also. I'm here to really speak briefly to this, because we, in first place, what has gone before is not on the books anymore. The original approval was long expired, so we're back here with a clean slate on this. The real issue, and I think the only issue here, because everything else that's involved can be technically taken care of at some port or another, since we exceed all the code requirements by a lot on everything, and I don't mean by a lot, by a piece of ground, but by a bunch. The real issue is this road and what you do with it. From my perspective, the problem, and this, this is a historical problem, I think, because Warren, back when you first were on zoning commission, which is in the age of the dinosaurs, there was, you know, there was so much space between what was being developed and what was to come, that the engineer was forced to look ahead at what Paul Hammersmith would call his 50 and his 100-year plan. And I'll give you an example, right along Kaufman Road there, Kaufman Road developed, Avery Road developed, and there was nothing in between, or virtually nothing. So when it followed, ultimately, then, when those developments took place, it was necessary to make sure that there would be adequate connectivity between them. And that was good, it was viable, it made sense. I question whether it makes sense on this piece of property today, and a reason for it is quite simple.
I like my color bad a little bit better. You can see through the dark lines here. Yeah.
Could I have you, we can't get you on the minutes if we don't have you near the mic, so.
That's all right, because I couldn't hear any of you guys talking when I was sitting there either. At any rate, what we got here is that you see behind the, now the ark, it was originally built as the Nazarian church, we've got floodplain. Now we got floodplain cutting across the land just to the south of the ark and just to north of our property. Now, Paul would tell you, Hammersmith, that there's no telling what's going to happen in the next 100 years, and the Baptist church may be gone. Well, that may be, but certainly the trend has not been that way. They've grown and they've thrived since they've come to this community, and it's legitimate to think that they're going to do so. So the question is, does the rule still make any sense that we've got to be able to have connectivity? And I understand that the engineers don't want any more curb cuts on, or street cuts on Kaufman Road. That's, you know, that's clearly understandable. But on the other hand, what does it have to do with here, where it's so unlikely that anything else is going to develop in there? The only property in between, the property between the church and, and this site is township now, so it's going to have to be zoned, it's going to have to be annexed and zoned. And what kind of zoning are you going to be able to do with a piece of property that that is that long and narrow? I don't know. How do you develop? Notice I stepped back behind the microphone? How do you develop it? Practically speaking, I don't think that you do. So I just think, and Paul and I had a lengthy discussion about this, and we agree to disagree, but I just don't think any longer as to this particular site, that the old connectivity rule or potential connectivity rule makes any sense. Certainly, the neighbors would prefer, I think, not to have the traffic coming through their neighborhood if, in fact, the Baptist church went away, and if, in fact, that, that parcel in between became part of a larger rezoning. It's just not going to happen. And if it's not going to happen, then let's do what makes sense here. This, Romanelli and Hughes, if all of you, any of you done any visits up to the last major development they did here in town, which was over at the corner of Memorial Drive and Dublin Road, the Bob Alder property, you know, they end up with a whole bunch of really high-end, nice houses. And that's what we're going to set down here, right in the middle of this neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood, no question about it. You know, the other side of this too, and it goes into the drainage and everything else. Part of the problem with developing this and the expense of development, which I understand is not your problem, is that that is rock. And what had to happen on the whole Forest Run area in the Woods of Indian Run is they had to bring in a rock grinder after they blasted in order to dig it out so they could put in foundations and streets and stuff like that. So, you know, high-end works better for us, and I think it works better for the city. I can't see the connectivity being something that we should lose that over. I would be happy to take any questions, as would RJ and...
Thank you, sir.
Romanelli and Hughes.
Looking to the Commission for questions for the applicant.
I'm not exactly sure where the church is. Can we?
Yeah, there are two churches, actually, that are very...
When you say church, the actual church building is on the west side of Kaufman Road. I'm going to walk around and point to where the ark is.
I can show you also.
The whole back part of that was cut off by floodplain, and it comes right up almost to the back of the building that exists there now.
So the, the image on our screen right now is the church that you're speaking of is, is above the shaded area.
I'm sorry, Gina, or Ms. Fox.
Yeah, is, is the church, okay, you're pointing to where the church is.
So that's the ark, just for clarification. That's a church property, but it's what they're currently using as their youth center and their other language congregations. The church itself is immediately adjacent on the west side of Kaufman Road.
We always refer to it as church because originally it was the Nazarian church. They built there, but when they no longer had a congregation that could support it, they sold it to the Baptist church, which uses it as a multifunctional building.
And due north of the site is one partial with one home on, is that correct?
I think that's Al, well, Al's dead now, but I think that's a Gobble family home site, and it is in township.
Okay.
It is not within the city of Dublin. And Lucy, his, Lucy still lives there, so.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Close, what, what's the applicant's point of view with respect to, what's the concern?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What's the concern about extending the road to the north? What's, is it, what is the applicant's concern opposition to a proposed extension?
The reason I quit doing these hearings is I'm going deaf.
Okay. Well, it reverberates. Okay, so what specifically is the applicant's concern with respect to potentially extending the street?
RJ.
Good evening, RJ Sabatino, the applicant. The concern with extending the streets, I mean, it just doesn't work, I mean, it doesn't make any sense for future connectivity. The land adjacent, directly to the north is not in the city of Dublin. The church directly adjacent to that other site is never going to move. This is, this cul-de-sac is the best layout for what we want to do there. Large, four large lots. I mean, it's, it's, it's the best use for the land. I know for a fact as well, we have one neighbor here in support, I don't want to speak for anybody, but in support, I'm sure you can say it if you, if you would like to come up and join us, in support of the cul-de-sac, and I can tell you as well, I'm sure there are many, many more in support of that.
Just one follow-up question, Mr. Sabatino. How would it impact the neighborhood if it were a straight shot instead of a cul-de-sac? So right now, your parcel ends right there at where the stub would end. I imagine that there would be reflectors and the same type of thing we see immediately adjacent to undeveloped property throughout the city of Dublin, but what would the impact to the neighborhood, the neighborhood of four homes be?
Your neighborhood? This?
Our, yes, yes. So, I mean, if we want to put a stub, that means we're going to have more lots, supposedly. I mean, that would be the intention. So, I mean, we'll have to re-change our site plan, we'll have to, I mean, we might as well add more lots as well, more traffic for, I mean, the existing Forest Run streets, the existing neighborhood. I mean, frankly, we don't want that. We want only four large, beautiful, hopefully built by Romanelli and Hughes homes, and that's, that's the idea.
If I could just interject.
Sure.
If, in fact, you were to presuppose that somebody could go in and buy the Baptist church facility and could buy the Gobble property and make a bigger subdivision out of it, now you're running an ungodly amount of additional traffic through, through a residential neighborhood, which... neighborhood, which I don't think anybody would want.
People, I'm sorry, people want to live on a cul-de-sac.
Okay, let's try to deconstruct these issues. What happens to the north is speculative.
That's right.
Your application, we're looking at just these sort of four corners of this document. Explain why an extension in and of itself, a potential extension, would require you to add more lots. I'm not following that logic.
Frankly, I mean, we might as well. I mean, we have...
Okay. You might as well, but it's, you're not saying you will or you must, but that would be another alternative. I mean, you could add more lots with this stub if you wanted to, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so that, it's not ipso facto, one doesn't necessarily follow the other. But there, what I'm trying to get, the most salient point seems to be that you feel the prospective homeowners like to live on cul-de-sacs. Is that fair?
That's fair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shear.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
I was out at the site yesterday, and you look, you could, the church is way away. There's that piece of land between, yeah, this piece that goes completely around it of land. How big is that? How much distance does that from the top of their lot, their lot to the church? How many acres is that, or how, what's the distance to that? I couldn't find that in the...
You're asking that, the distance would be 300 feet between the top, the north property line here to the south property line.
Yeah, the top, okay, we're looking at this site right now. Look at the top, no, the top of the, that site, yes, okay. Now, what's the distance from that to the back of the church?
It's about 300 feet. And then the site itself is about 6.6, 6.7 acres in size. And that's the piece that's in Washington Township.
Okay, so this whole site here that's vacant right now, okay, to the church and left and right side of our applicant's property, is how many acres is that?
Are you asking about their parcel?
Not their parcel. I know what their parcel is, the parcel around it.
Got it.
It looks to be about 250 feet.
It's 250 feet, and how many acres is the whole?
It's 300, I measured it.
What is it?
Well, it's 300 feet separating those two parcels, because I measured it. And then in terms of total acreage, so the parcel to the north owned by the Gables, that is 6.67 acres in size. If you sum that with the parcel that's owned by the Agspulers, then you get...
There's several parcels.
Then you get a total of 8.84, and that would be on top of the Nature Drive parcel, potentially, if it were ever to be included as part of a larger development.
I suppose you also have to consider what Mr. Close said earlier, the exhibit down here, usable acreage. I mean, it's so much floodplain to the north of us as well, not usable.
Yeah, there is something. I racked my brain when I was looking at this from the last time we approved it, okay? And I remember that connectivity was very important to the city, because whatever goes in there, they're only going to have one way in, way out. And it doesn't seem like that would be a big traffic pattern, other than for people who live in Indian Run and maybe a few people, it wouldn't be the most direct way out, but it would be another way out. And it would actually be an advantage for the people in Indian Run, they'd have another way out also, instead of going straight out on Kaufman Road. So I was just curious about that. So I remember that there was a lot of discussion about that access the last time, and the city was very much in favor of having that rather than a cul-de-sac, because, as I said, our other subdivisions, Velvetir, for example, that was a big deal with the connectivity in case Riviera developed, and Riviera did develop, you know. And so, so I just wondered. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that information.
Yeah, if I could just add too, just going back and reviewing the history from the 2014 application preliminary plat, there was discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission specifically saying that there was kind of misunderstandings of stub streets for future development, and then also making it clear, can we add in, what's shown on the screen, there was a condition to add a note on the plat stating that Nature Drive may extend further north. So there was discussion back in 2014, there was support from both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to have that public street extend with right-of-way extended to the north property line, as is shown on the screen. So staff's recommendation in 2021 is the same as what our recommendation was in 2014, which is the same as the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council back in 2014.
So just one clarification question, Mr. Henderson. Currently, there is a stub coming out of the neighborhood. What was the city's intention with the original application and the stub coming out of the neighborhood?
The expectation is for that stub to extend through the site and also extend further to the north with any future development.
Thank you.
Well, the other question was, I remember another discussion we had was that it is in the township, but if it was ever developed, it would most likely be annexed into Dublin to get water and sewer, just like many, many other areas. So being in the township, I don't think is a consequence of...
That's correct. And just, you know, the city of Dublin, we're here forever. So I understand, you know, we need to have this forward thinking of 20, 30, beyond years, what would happen with these sites. I know we're talking about the church, and, you know, hopefully that's doing well, and there is no redevelopment, but we do have to look at it from a permanent standpoint. If these sites were to redevelop, what is our recommendation as far as access management? Having unnecessary additional access points on Kaufman Road is not something staff is supportive of.
Thank you.
Another thing I remember was that the stub would only, if we had, you had a stub, it would only go to your property, okay, and stop. And then when the next development comes in, if the city felt it would be a traffic problem or some problem, they could leave the stub there, which we've done in several places. Another subdivision comes in, and they say, well, that's, that would be a cut-through or whatever, we don't want to do that. So there would always be an option not to cut that through when the next development comes in, if it does create a traffic problem or a hazard for Indian, you know, a problem for Indian Run.
And I've never known this commission to have trouble saying no to Indian, it's a fact of life.
Right, right, you're right.
Not pejoratively at all. It's made for a lot of good development in this town.
Right.
Mr. Way.
So I have two questions, and they're maybe, they're related. So on the plan that's up on the screen right now, the older plan, is there, is there any, I don't know if anybody's around when this was done, but it's curious why the road curves the way it does. Like, it was trying to meet something to the north, maybe, that somebody was thinking about, as opposed to just going straight?
Right, so maybe there was a consideration with the floodplain, because there is, the applicant's correct, there is floodplain on the site, but again, there is also a lot of developable land on that parcel to the north that's not within the floodplain. So I think, and I wasn't around for that time, but my suggestion for why that road curves that way is to try to provide more space away from the floodplain.
I mean, the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So related to that, the parcel to the north, if it were to develop, would it be required to create an intersection with Arlington Parkway as its access point? Because if you don't, it's going to be, it would be offset in a very unusual way, and maybe not appropriate from a traffic standpoint.
Yeah, and I mean, I think from an overall planning standpoint, you know, when that would develop in the future, we would work with the developer at the time to come up with a unique site layout and configuration, and hopefully it would intersect in a T-intersection, right, to minimize conflicts.
So that would be a goal, but not a requirement? Is that what you're saying?
So the planned unit development process, which out of all likelihood this would be rezoned to, is a negotiated process, and so staff would negotiate the site layout, and it may become a requirement of the city engineer.
I'm just thinking of the offset. I mean, is it possible to get another access point that close to Arlington Parkway for that parcel?
It does not, honestly, unless you have some sort of really curving back down. Again, the intent here is to minimize unnecessary access points on the Kaufman Road, to maintain the existing capacity of Kaufman Road. When you introduce additional access points, that also introduces additional conflict points on that roadway, which is a safety concern. So if there's a way to avoid those additional access points, that's something that we certainly recommend.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission at this time, for either staff or for the applicant? I just have a couple. I understand we're an informal review, and so this is, I guess, more a statement than a question. Apparatus turnarum. We would mitigate that at future meetings to make sure that safety concerns, those sorts of things are all met.
That's correct. And that's what you're seeing on that 2014 proposal. That was for fire access to be able to sufficiently turn around.
Okay. And then the other one, the applicant made a point to say that we're dealing with rock, and I heard specifically the word blasting, and we have neighbors adjacent to this parcel. Would that be handled during the later applications and working with the building department to ensure as least disruption to neighborhood as possible?
That's correct. And we don't have 100% verification that there is bedrock on this site. There is other areas adjacent to this that we did not encounter bedrock, so that's something that's just to be determined.
Understood.
And yes, if there was bedrock, we would certainly work to make sure we're minimizing impacts to surrounding residents.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
You're welcome.
Looking back to the applicant, any final statements before we go into deliberation?
Kind of where you just left off with the, I mean, the soils conditions, hoping, I mean, hoping for a high-end ranch on slab product. So, I mean, obviously that doesn't involve blasting. I will also say once again, the preliminary plat from 2014 is long expired. The stub-road connection, as it's curving, like you said, I mean, your staff just said you don't want any more connections on Kaufman Road. I mean, it looks like it's about to go over there without that is aligned. This is, in our mind, the best, the best use for the land, four large, beautiful lots. We want to move forward with this. We plan on moving forward with this. Again, we appreciate the informal review and the feedback and the questions, but we do intend to move forward with a cul-de-sac. Happy to answer any last-minute questions. Mr. Close, you want to say anything?
Thank you both. At this time, I'll turn time over to, actually, you know what? I'll turn time over to the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak to this application? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Mike Ananaya. I am at 5216 Forest Run Drive. I am here not only as a resident, but also I am a board member of the Woods of Indian Run Homeowners Association, so I am here as a representative of the homeowner. Several owners in our neighborhood have approached the HOA with concerns about the development on this property. I'll speak to those concerns, but one of the things that I did hear in the discussion that I know is probably going to piggyback off of our, some of the concerns from our neighbors is, you know, first and foremost, I think, like most people, that would back up to this property would probably prefer that it doesn't get developed. But in the absence of that being a possibility, we would much prefer a cul-de-sac versus a, an extending road, especially given the city engineers' comments about not wanting to have further connections onto Kaufman. That would mean that Forest Run Drive would be the only connection in and out of the neighborhood, which would add additional traffic, particularly for neighbors in the front end of our neighborhood. So that I know is a concern that several people in our neighborhood have. But beyond that, as an HOA, we have concerns, because there's been no effort made by the developer to contact our HOA. Specifically, one of the questions we have with knowing that there have been soil tests in the back, or in the previous deliberations to develop this, that held-back development, we have concerns about the safety and how are we going to minimize disruption to our homeowners if this is developed. With our neighborhood being that single access point, we would like to know, there was a question posed about will this neighborhood have its own HOA, or are they intending to combine with our HOA? I can tell you, if there are going to be additional areas that, as an HOA, we may be responsible for caring for, we probably would prefer that not to be the case. That's one of the nice things about our neighborhood, is we have very low HOA dues. We would like to keep it that way. So we don't really want to add additional maintenance. But having said that, if there is a separate HOA, we would like to know how they are going to work in conjunction with ours, given that our neighborhood serves as the only access point for that. There's been no communication on that point. And then finally, the biggest concern is, again, the fact that there was no effort by the developer to contact our HOA. We have a public website, we have our email address on there. It is very easy to get ahold of us. That has not happened. Our request would be that no action is taken on this property until the developer does speak with our board to address these concerns. I think all of them are addressable, but that effort has not been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a moment, we're in public comment. I'll turn some time back over to you. Sir, did you have a comment? Thank you. All right, I'm seeing a couple of people in agreement with the statement made. I'd like to invite the developer back up for... Yes, please. Please, please turn on the mic.
Good. RJ Sabatino back here. Again, this is an informal review, just very preliminary. We're trying to work through everything. I will say, I apologize for not addressing the homeowners association question. It would be our preference and our intent to have these four lots have their own HOA that maintains that reserve area and that open space, frankly, because as this HOA, we're going to have our highest standards, and that's our preference. And I think, I think that's all to address regarding that. Do appreciate your support regarding the cul-de-sac, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabatino. Anyone further from the public to address the commission? Seeing none, I will turn it over to the commission. Mr. Way, would you like to start us off this evening?
Are we going to answer questions, or we just want, you want just comments at this point?
So just comments at this point. Well, if I could have you focus your comments on the three items that the, that the staff is looking for right now, and then we'll come back around to number four, which is any other considerations after we've gone through the commission.
So this is a perfect example of being a planning agency and, or organization or commission, and not really knowing what the planning is necessarily going to happen around the site. And I find that a little frustrating, but it's, you know, pretty typical. I would really like, you know, some ideas, some thoughts about what might happen to the north, and whether there might be a connection to Arlington Parkway on that parcel, or just what are the limitations to access from Kaufman, you know, north of the site, so we could start to think a little bit broader and long-term about what our decisions might be. I do have to say that the Woods of Indian Run is kind of a cul-de-sac neighborhood. I think you have three cul-de-sacs and a partial cul-de-sac. So in terms of the character of the neighborhood, it's kind of consistent, I would say. So I could, I could look at it that, from that perspective. But I just worry that I don't want to cut off what the opportunity might be moving to the north in terms of connectivity, and making sure that it all ties together in some thoughtful way. That's one point. And I also want to make the point about the open space reserve, again, somewhat being isolated. I want to, I'd like that to be looked at a little bit in more detail. And I do note that there is a trail that comes out of the, off of Forest Run Drive that comes out along the North Fork of Indian Run, and it would be, again, the idea of connectivity from a pedestrian standpoint and bikeways, of thinking about a trail that ran along that about a trail that ran along that to the north, and whether this site could contribute to that connectivity, connect into the existing trail, and provide a series of connections as you move up north. So I think that, that's kind of the response to number two, because then that open space would become part of a larger community connectivity. Again, the cul-de-sac versus the, you know, the road going through will drive somewhat of the lot configuration perhaps, but it doesn't have to. So I'm not, I'm happy, you know, with, you know, the idea that there's a series of larger lots there. I think that answers all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Fox?
You know, I, I think Mr. Way makes some good points. The woods are a cul-de-sac community, and I get that. And I can understand where you would not want more traffic to dump into your one access point to Kaufman. So I think, but the big question is, is that if it develops to the north, you have the opportunity for a lot more access for pedestrians to get to the, hopefully, we have, you know, more trails along the creek and all that sort of thing. I'm kind of curious why you came before the, early on in 2014, you know, with it this way, and you were, you know, you were going to go forward with it. Is that not the case? You weren't going to go forward?
We recently became the landowners. We had nothing to do with the 2014 plat.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, to me, the preference would be for increased connection. But I do understand how you would feel about, I think that there's a lot of questions about whether or not those increased connections will benefit you or will be to your disadvantage. And I don't know the answer to that. I think that's something that planning has to help this commission understand, because if we say to you that we understand that, that you want a cul-de-sac, and in the, in the future, we've cut you off for being able to move back and forth through areas, and we got a high school below, and someone might want to walk to school and all that sort of thing, I don't understand the connections within the woods right now to tell whether or not we have good connectivity through there. There's so many, there's so many, to me, too many unanswered, too many unanswered questions. So I'd like to keep my mind open to it, but I do believe that connectivity is priority, and the plan always was, to bring this road forward. So I'm, I'm not supportive of the layout of the lots right now because of that. And I worry about the open space reserve becoming a burden for the city to try to get back and taking care of one open space reserve for four lots. It seems like a big burden to the city. And I would prefer that we, we may have a management over that, but I sure hate to have to put our people out there mowing that thing. So those are, that's just right now my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah. Well, I'll address a couple of things that Ms. Fox addressed. First of all, the, the, the open area, which wants, they want to have as a dry pond now. I think, I agree with Ms. Fox. I think it'd be a real burden on the city. But on the other hand, I think that a wet pond would add some beauty. But I think that the association is getting a raw deal, the Indian Run Association, they're the entrance to this, to that subdivision. They maintain that entrance, and then we're sticking a cul-de-sac back there, which he said four houses, but if we decide differently, it might be more houses. And, and, so I think that they, this is a real good time, because there's going to be no vote on this. I think that they should get together and decide what they're going to do with the association so it's fair. It doesn't seem like, to me, it's fair to Indian Run to have your own little thing back there, and, and you're using the entrance, and it's part of the, you should be part of their association, thus help them financially as an association. I also, I have mixed feelings about the cul-de-sac. I think that, that I always like to look down the road, and I think down the road, first of all, we're not telling him he has to cut it through to the church. We're telling him all he has to do is extend the stub, which has been there for years and years and years, and might not ever be used. I mean, there's stubs around Dublin that have been there for 40, 50 years and never cut through. So it depends on how it'd be developed. And I have faith in the future boards and the city that if it is, would be a problem traffic-wise and so on for Indian Run, they wouldn't let them cut it through. Okay? And, and as Mr. Close said, that, he said, well, it's in township, it might never be developed. So if it's never developed, it's never developed, and the stub would never be used. So I kind of think I'm in favor of just extending the stub and maybe reconfiguring the, the, the open space and reconfiguring the lots so that we have, it's a more accessible open space and that, that we don't have another dry pond back there to overgrow. That's my opinion right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Schnear?
Well, I share my fellow commissioners' concern regarding the, the open space. I don't know, I don't know how that would, needs to be addressed, but obviously a concern. And I think the point made about the maintenance, the city's maintenance, I think, is, is relevant. My comments on the, on the lot size are coupled with the cul-de-sac issue. And I'm, I look at the map, you know, the overhead map, and there is this nature drive stub that has been there presumably as part of the original plat, and it's, it's sort of, it's out there. It was known. Now, maybe everybody intended that it would just sort of go away, you know, because nothing would ever happen. But I sort of feel like all the residents were on notice or should have been on notice that that little stub existed and might serve some purpose in the future. So now it would serve some purpose, and now the question is, where does it, you know, where does it end? And I think the precedent is, there was, it would appear, looking at the map, that it was always considered or contemplated that there would be development towards the north, and the city needed to account for it. And so we would just be extending that, I guess, pun intended, by suggesting that the stub continued to the, to the northern terminus of that property. I think that, I'm wondering, though, if it really could be a stub at that point, because we call something about, you know, the engineer, emergency vehicles needing a turnaround or something. So it does work as a cul-de-sac now if the radius is correct, so an emergency vehicle could turn, or is that not a concern and doesn't need necessarily be addressed?
So with the preliminary and final, should this move forward, fire will, fire department will have their input, and they need to have access out of there. So that's why in 2014, where you see it was stubbed, but there were, towards the north portion here, I'll get my cursor there, maybe. So they have to account for some turnaround space should a, a fire truck have to come through and find a way out?
And if this, if the stub was extended to the northern boundary, would it really be a stub, or would it be a turnaround?
It would be a turnaround.
Yeah, okay.
But that's until future development were to happen in the north.
Thank you.
I echo my fellow commissioners. I don't have much to add. I understand the, the desire of the neighborhood residents to minimize, because there's this big unknown right now. It's, it's, we don't know what's going to happen after those proposed four lots. And, you know, we don't want an entire neighborhood emptying through our neighborhood. I understand all of those concerns. I would look to staff to, when we see this again, if we see this again, to bring forward the transportation plan for the city and the community plan so that we see that planning, what, what the vision was. And I understood, you know, the applicant brought up a couple of times that they weren't involved in the 24, 2014 application, but the city was involved in the 2014 application, and a board very similar to ourselves did their due diligence and did their homework and had these conversations on what the future of the city was, what that 20, 20, 30-year plan was for community development. And so that's why we continue to reference it, even though it's not on your application, it's still part of the city. And so we will continue to, to use those reference points, because we like to do our homework. And, and if the wheel's already been invented, we don't want to have to go back and start over again. We certainly have our own brains, and that's the benefit of having fresh blood on the commission, coupled with experience on the commission, because we have the continuity and we have the, the new perspective. So layouts and lot sizes, again, my concern is that cul-de-sac. Open space location, I would look forward to seeing how that open space is going to benefit the community and not just the four homeowners. I am looking forward to hearing the rest of the conversation from the commission this evening. So, Mr. Way, if I could start back over with you, we're going to go on to number four, which is other considerations, so that we can have the applicant thinking and direction to staff for when and if this comes back before us.
I think the, the points that I've already raised are my, my big concerns, and I agree. I hope that when this comes back, we can have some greater insight into what might happen in the future, because it helps us to make shorter-term decisions. And I, and agree, the, the open space reserve needs to be rethought in terms of how it contributes to the larger community.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Fox?
As I look at this, I can't help but wonder what it will look like with just the street stubbed. And, and I appreciate the fact that we don't know what's happening north of it. So I can't help but wonder if there is a way, I don't have a problem with the varying size of the lots. I do have a problem with these open spaces that have no purpose, and they don't do anything except they're just hidden back in a corner. Maybe there's a possibility, as you relook at these lots, that, or the configuration, that you can have a bulb-like center in here and get the look that you're looking for, and yet extend the road to the end so that it doesn't seem as if it's a dead end to nowhere. You wouldn't have to worry about a turnaround, because the bulb would create a turnaround for you. And you might be able to incorporate some open space around it to give the whole interior of this lot space a much better image than just simply a concrete cul-de-sac. I'm not a designer, but it doesn't seem like it has to be black or white. I think there's a gray in here somewhere. So I think those are, those are probably my, my final thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I don't have much to say. I think it, the subdivision, Indian Run is a beautiful subdivision. It's laid out beautifully. The streets curve, and it's very nice. And I, I think with a little imagination, you could make something that really blends and, and also take, takes advantage of the opportunity to make sure that it blends with future development to the north. So it's accessible, future development north. But I think also, I'll repeat, that I think you should certainly get it together with the residents and work out the association thing that's going to affect me. I think that's, that's only fair, and, and good luck. I think it's a great opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Schnear?
I agree. It's, this is a great location. It's a great plan, notwithstanding the comments. And I, you know, we have high expectations, and I'm confident that you will meet them.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sabatino and Mr. Close, we certainly appreciate your coming before this, this evening. Are there any items of clarification that you seek from the commission at this, at this time? Thank you. Thank you, Zach. Certainly. All right. You're welcome. We will move on to case three, Deer Run Lift Station, located at 85, 88 Dublin Road, 21-018 AFDP amended final development plan. This application is a request for the replacement of an existing structure with a new lift station to mitigate sanitary sewer overflow. This site is zoned planned unit development, Mirfield Village, and is west of the intersection of Dublin Road and Glen Air Drive. So, Mr. Henshaw, welcome back.
Thank you. You're not through with me yet. Well, good evening. This is...
But these lift stations are, you know, these are, we're on the edges of our seats.
Right. That's what I expected tonight. Well, good evening again. This is a request for review and determination of an amended file development plan for the Deer Run Lift Station. The site is highlighted in yellow on your screen. The site is 0.18 acres in size and is zoned planned unit development district within the Mirfield Village. It should be noted that this lot is currently owned by Mirfield Village, but is in the process of being transferred to the city for the purposes of this project. So a zoom-in vision, version here, the site is heavily wooded with an existing mechanical structure that will be removed with this, this proposal. Additionally, the red that's outlined on your screen is the existing floodplain here, which does occupy quite a bit of the, the site that we are reviewing today. And for reference of what this, what's existing at the site and around the site, you can see the structure that is currently there, both a close-up and kind of from further away. And then you can see the rear and front of the site. So the site does front on Dublin Road to the east, where there's a current shared-use path. Additionally, there is a shared-use path that wraps around the rear side of this property as well. So this is a city project. The lift station is a part of a larger CIP project that is funded by the city and will be worked on by the city to improve the sanitary sewer system, specifically along Dublin Road. This lift station is the beginning of this improvement, so it is, it is where everything starts for this project. So the lift station is an emergency-only facility that would not continually run. It would only run on, on severe or emergency operations, which would be very, very few throughout the year. So shown is the proposed site plan. It is very colorful. There's a reason for that. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing structure, as stated before, and that would be the hatched box in the middle, at the center of the screen. The lot, the lot lines are actually outlined by the green box. The red is a temporary construction easement, so it is not a part of the, the final layout of the lot. So the applicant is proposing a 312-square-foot lift station. As stated, the lift station is an emergency facility that would mitigate potential sanitary overflow from the future sanitary gravity main along Dublin Road. The structure is 14 feet in height and is a pre-fabricated building that sits on a concrete slab. This is set back four feet from the east property line, which would be the front property line, eight and a half feet from the north property line, and 52 feet from the west. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a 224-square-foot chemical feed system. This chemical feed system is, its main purpose is to mitigate any wastewater odor. So any wastewater that would be coming through this system, that is the purpose that it would serve. This would be located towards the rear of the property. It would be 11.3 feet from the north property line and five and a half feet from the rear. So as this is located within a PUD, as this is located within a PUD, there are specific development texts that usually accompany planned unit development districts, as this is in the Mirfield Village. However, there is not a development text that would apply to this site. So the applicant is requesting a text modification to the Mirfield Village PUD to require no less than three feet for any front side or rear setback that would only be for this facility. So it'd be for both of these, these structures on the site. Steph is supportive of this request due to the extended width of the rideaway of Dublin Road, as it does exceed 100 feet adjacent to the site, the many natural features between the mature trees, as well as the floodplain that impacts the site, and the unique size and shape of this lot. Additionally, there is a new access point that is going to be established along Dublin Road, which is highlighted in yellow, that leads into a private parking area, and that is for any service vehicles to be able to turn around without backing back out onto Dublin Road. And shown is the proposed building form and material. And shown is the proposed building form and material. The building form would be the two right, uh, images that are shown on the screen. The, so that's how the form of the building will, will look. The left photo is, um, a, a reference to specific materials, uh, that the applicant is looking to utilize on this building. So Steph is recommending that the applicant continue to work with staff, uh, to select the final exterior materials for the prefabricated structure, specifically the dark neutral stone and siding facade materials in the left photo. Finally, the proposed landscape plan is shown on the screen. Uh, as the site is heavily wooded and full of vegetation, a number of the trees and shrubs that are located here will be removed, uh, to make way for this project. The applicant will be providing a number of deciduous evergreen trees and shrubs to screen the facility from adjacent property lines, or property, uh, adjacent properties, uh, and Dublin Road. The applicant will continue to work with staff to finalize the landscape plan and identify any existing trees that could be preserved on the site. So shown is the minor text modification to the three setback requirements for the site, as stated, staff is report, supportive of this request. Additionally, staff has reviewed this to all applicable amended file development plan criteria and are recommending approval of the text modification and approval of the amended file development plan with three conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, uh, our other staff members are here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. Looking to the commission for questions for staff. Mr. Way?
Um, one of the things that I'm, what is the, what is the chemical control system thing look like? It's hard to, is it a building, or is it just a, something in the ground?
It would be a tank. Um, so it's a seven-foot-tall tank that would be screened by an eight-foot-tall, uh, wooden privacy fence, and then additional landscaping.
Do we have a, any kind of photographs or anything of what that looks like?
I can pull one up for you.
What's that? Oh, I'm, you, you are going to pull it up. Okay.
Any other questions while we pull that up?
Yeah. I have two. Uh, for, one for Mr. Boggs. Um, I live in Mirfield, very close to this. Is it a conflict at all?
The conflict analysis would be whether this particular, uh, application and the structure that is proposed would have any, uh, material benefit or detriment to your property value. Um, so if you believe that there is any chance that that would be the case, then you should not participate. Um, and in fact, uh, in that case, my recommendation would be for you to step out while deliberation in voting occurs.
Yeah.
How, how close do you live to it?
Well, I live probably two hundred yards. I mean, I, I can't see it from my house, or I can't, but, but I mean, it's, it's, it's in Mirfield. It's, it's walking distance to my house. I don't know if I-
Do you believe that it would have any benefit or detriment to your property's value?
No.
Okay. Then, then it would be my, um, conclusion then that no conflict would exist, and you could participate.
Okay.
I, I would agree with that.
What?
I would agree that there's no conflict.
I just want to make sure that I don't, okay. Just, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Okay. The, the, I, I did go back there, uh, this week, because I wanted to see what, after I looked at this. What?
Because it's so close.
It's so close. Yeah, it was easy. No, I go to all the sites. I have, this one I could walk to, though. Okay. Anyway, the, the building back there is pretty small, and it's buried in the, if, if, in, in the woods. In fact, it's dappled in a ravine kind of thing. Okay, now, when I looked at the plans, this one, how much bigger is this one than that building? It's like three times the size or something, right?
I would, I would let the applicant speak towards the, the condition of the existing structure. I know that the proposed is fourteen feet. I'd let Aaron probably speak towards the existing.
Aaron Stanford, sixty-five, fifty-five, Sherre Rings Road, Dublin, Ohio. It's good to see you all again. Um, when we, could you bring up the site plan that had the hatched, showed that hatch location? And Warren, you're, you're right. This, the old building that's going to be, that would be demolished is, is smaller than the footprint. It also serves a different purpose. Um, that building there was a water booster station versus this new building would be a sanitary sewer pump lift station. Um, you know, and, and just one of the things that we'd like to encourage, it, it's something that hasn't been, um, used for many years. So you, that's probably something else that you noticed when you went back, is the condition of that structure. Um, so really, it's not something that is technically being replaced by this structure, but it is something, because of the location, will be demolished as part of the project.
Okay, but the structure that's there, it is dilapidated. I went and looked at it, but it's, you can't see it. And you got to know it's there to get there, okay? Now, when I looked at this structure, uh, this looks like a much more, um, substantial structure. And that's, so I'm asking, how big is this? Is this, is this seventy-five feet wide? Is it fifty feet wide? I couldn't find anything in the, does it say the measurements?
We believe that the, it, the dimension, I can't read on that, that sheet. I believe it's fourteen by twenty-six.
So it's a, it's approximately twelve feet wide by twenty-five feet deep?
That's pretty substantial. That's, that's going to be, I mean, that's, it'd be hard to hide that, okay? And, and it's probably not going to be down in that swale, right? Where the other one is.
It would be a little bit closer to the road, and you're right. It would be a little bit more visible to the road. And more, and, and we haven't, we haven't taken that lightly. So one of the things that you've seen is when you look at that landscaping plan, and there are other lift stations similar to this throughout the city. This will, this will probably be the most landscaped lift station that we have. Um, so that was one of the things that we wanted to focus on, is if you notice the wood screening, the dioxide tanks, that was one of the first questions we had. The additional landscaping, we've tried to, with the site layout, um, minimize the tree disruption. That was one of the other things that we did with our site layout. Even so much as when you looked at the original layout of the, the parking area, we reduced that as much as possible just to, with everything that we had, we wanted to limit the tree removal and the disruption to the absolute minimum we need to get the equipment that we needed in this place. Um, the second part of that is when you look at some of the architectural details of lift station, again, you know, in, in the world, in my world of lift stations, this is probably one of the more architecturally detailed lift stations. Um, and even those pictures that we have represented, you know, one of the things that we're going to keep working on is combining some of those elements that you had seen on the, that, those illustrations to make it the most attractive lift station we can. So when we look at that, I think one of the things that, that pop out to us is, you know, the brick that you see on the right side probably isn't appropriate. So we've already started talking about doing something that looks, um, has that stone appearance that you see on the left side. Um, the other thing that we've also talked about is, is doing everything we can to kind of hide this or help it blend into the landscape. So that when, you'll notice in the staff report, when we talk about using more neutral darker colors, I think that's something else that we're going to work towards to make this blend more into the landscape and not, not be something that sticks out in that area.
Now, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. I'm looking at the picture here. This is all one building I'm looking at, right? Is, is, or I'm looking at two buildings. It looks like I'm looking at two buildings, right?
Up on the screen?
Yeah.
So those are, those are three different building structures that, um, this manufacturer has. And what we're trying to represent with this is some of the building form, but also some of the available materials. So I believe it'll be more closely represent, um, the upper right drawing in, in appearance, but the materials is what we're trying to represent also on this drawing.
Okay, so it looks like it'll be some kind of vinyl siding and, and, and brick, right?
Okay. It, so what it, what it's going to have, the, the upper part would be, would be, would look more like that lap siding that you see. The lower portion, what we would want to see in that area where you see the brick in that upper right, we'd want it to use more of a stone-like material. So that's when we picture, and the colors, we want to have something that's darker and neutral. So when we think about the appearance, I think that's what we're, we're trending towards when we look at the options that that manufacturer has.
Okay. It doesn't look too Mirfield-y to me. Uh, it, uh, it, it doesn't look like it's going to blend very well. Is, is it going to be at the exact location of the old one? Is it going to be sitting there? Is, it, it's going to be closer to the road? Is it going to be?
It will, it will sit closer to the road. So if you could bring up the, so-
Is it going to be north of that site or south of that?
It will be north and closer to the road. That's how I would describe it.
So it'll be farther away from those houses, because when I went back there, I noticed that Krail Court backs right up to that thing.
And that, and that is the advantage. Now, and, and there's two things that are going on that, that kind of dictated the site of the building. One, we talked about the floodplain. So you saw that in that, that original drawing. The other thing, the other nice part about where it's located is exactly what you just noticed was, we were, we were purposely trying to be as sensitive we can to the, the surrounding neighbors. Now, that being said, one of the things that we want to reiterate is this pump station is a wet weather pump station. And, and what that really means is, it's not something that's continuously in use. So what this will do is in, uh, times of heavier rain, heavier sanitary flow, when our existing system starts to get overloaded, this system will turn on and help pump mechanically that flow. You saw that, you saw the forced main down, um, Dublin Road to help kind of help the system with capacity. And it's very important. This is a very important project to us, because we have had, um, sanitary sewer overflows on the golf course. And this is one of these, we've recognized that in this area, these sanitary sewers are becoming overloaded. So this was the solution. And again, that's the last thing that drove the location of this, is existing sanitary sewer, the gravity sewer that this is trying to serve, is located just to the south of the structure.
Yeah, I, I understand all that. I, I just, as, as far as appearance, um, we can put that picture up again? I, I just don't think any of those buildings are buildings that are going to blend in. And that's what I'm saying. If, the, the one that's all brick doesn't, doesn't even blend in, because there's no brick like that anywhere in any neighborhood around there. And so I, I wonder if they can, you know, it'd probably look better if it was all hardy plank, dark brown. And the other ones all, the one I looked at the other day is all cedar, even though a lot of it's rotten, but it, it's been there for over forty years. Um, uh, and it, you hardly notice it unless you're looking for it. And so this one's going to really stand out. And I just wonder if they can change the facade and-
So, so there are options, and we'd love to hear that feedback, because I, that is one of the, that's one of the challenges, is, you know, in this area, it is, it is tough, the architectural detailing that we can get on these systems that are coming to us on these prefabricated, uh, lift stations, they are limited, but there are options. So what you just had recognized, when you're talking, there are options that have that siding that's extended all the way down. So there are different color options that we can, can put into that. You know, in the, in the staff report, and what we're requesting is that, one, if we can get some guidance or preference of what you guys would like to see, we're absolutely going to work with staff to try to get that to blend in as much as possible. Um, recognizing, kind of twofold, recognizing the architectural character of the area that's around, and wanting it to blend into the natural surroundings.
Yeah. Okay, and also, it's going to be very visible from the road, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so can we do opaque landscaping around it, like pine trees that'll grow together?
And that landscaping plan, I think, yeah, you, you can see in that area, for the most part, just about every area that we can plant on that site that doesn't cause a sight distance issue with the roadway, or getting to area that's already heavily treed. In this, this landscaping plan, you know, I think you can see that the city has went to every, um, effort that we can to put as much landscaping in this area.
So will we see a final plan, what this is going to look like?
This, this is, this would be the final landscaping plan.
Okay. Don't, it, it's not completely opaque, that's for sure. Okay. And, and what about the siding and what it, what, what the building's going to look like? Can we see a final on what the building's going to look like?
So what, what we're requesting tonight is that maybe what we're requesting and what we're asking is that if we could get some feedback, and that the condition would be that we would let, you would let us work with staff to finalize those details as we go to building permitting. Um, some of that is, you know, our desire to keep this project on, on schedule with, you know, the acquisition we still have left to do with the golf course, with our project schedule for bidding. Um, so what our hope and desire would be, that if we could receive some feedback about architecturally what you would like to see, that you would, you would, uh, leave that to staff to help guide us as we get that final detail when we go to building permitting.
Would, would we get to see it again before it?
In that instance, no. No, that's not what we're asking.
That's my concern. My, I, I'm actually more concerned about what you can see from the road. That, that seven forty-five was supposed to be a scenic road, and we start slapping substations on it with, you know, vinyl siding and, and, and so on. I think that, that, um, I, I'd be real concerned about what you can see from, there's a bike path that the city spent tons of money building, that you'll go right past this thing and, and be very close to it, is, is where, if you were going to move it, uh, uh, north and to the road. So you're going to be right off on the bike path, so, the city bike path. So, um, I, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd sure like to see it before.
Mr. Stanford, what materials are available to you from the prefab manufacturer?
So I believe the options they have, could you put back the, um, images? So there, there are natural material panels. So you'll see the stone, you'll see the brick. And those, in those, um, materials, there's also different colors. There's different patterns. And then they had, the other options that we've seen is a combination of the siding that you see represented in, in two of those structures. Um, you know, the ones we've seen as far as the representative examples are kind of a mix of all of those materials. So you can see the one on the left is all of that stone-type material. You see the other two are a mix of those two type of materials. And there are other ones that are, would be purely that siding appearance. When we looked at the one that was, um, pure siding, it felt a little more modern for the area. So that was kind of our reaction when we looked at that and thought about the structures in the area. So that was our, that was our reaction to that. Not saying that that's not an option, but that was our, our staff's reaction when we looked at those features.
Okay. My preference, I mean, I, this all stone building is fine, except it's not Dublin-type stone. It, it, you don't, you don't see this anywhere in Dublin. And, and if it was the, uh, regular limestone look that we have all over the place in Dublin, it would blend in better and, and, and look better. And it, and probably an all-stone building would be good, and the doors maybe blend, and the color would blend in with the stone and so on. So I, I think it's a building we don't want to stand out, I think. You know, it's, and so, uh, if, if you built it all, the, I'm sure this is stucco stone, probably, right? Yeah. If you, it's all stucco stone, but it was like, it's used all over Dublin, the limestone look. Um, I think that would be a tremendous improvement over whatever this is, you know?
And if I may add in really quickly, and, and we have added a condition, because we share the same concern you do, you know, you, the existing structure, you barely realize it's back there because, part because of the color of it. But we are, we do want to continue to work so we can work with Aaron and his team to continue moving this, but also make sure that it's compatible with the existing buildings in the area, but also that it's fairly hidden from, from Dublin Road. So that is a concern of ours, and we've at least tried to, um, identify that concern, so we can continue to work together with Aaron and his team.
Well, then, if, if we were to vote for this, would we be assured this would be limestone that looks like Dublin? And no, no side, no vinyl siding and-
We can condition. I would look to Aaron and his team to see what is available from, with this project, product.
That's better. Yeah.
I'm more, I'm more, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I was showing a plank image that's just a dark brown. That's what I heard Mr. Fishman say earlier, was even if it were all plank, but that dark brown, so it really does blend into the background. And I don't know about you, but what about if we were to look at the upper right, the roof? I liked the gables on the roof. Uh, if we were to do the dark brown, but then that limestone that you were talking about on the lower portion of the building, to blend it in, so that you had the, the brown to blend into the trees and the stone to blend into the ground?
Yeah, I, I'd like everybody else's opinion, because I'm not an architect. And we, we have one that, that I, I think if you put the dark brown and you put the stone around it, that makes it stick out even more. It might be better to, just to put the whole building brown. Like the one that's there now, I mean, you, I never heard anybody even say it was there. You know, as I said, I had a look for it when I looked at this plan. So I, I remembered it was down there somewhere, but it, it's just, it's, it's just dark brown wood thing sitting in the woods, and there's trees all around it. And, you know, it's, it's, it's well shielded. But it is a sensitive area. It, it's, it's more sensitive to, to seven forty-five, which I think is a beautiful road. And it, by the way, designated a scenic road. And, and I hate to just slap a, you know, substation sitting on the road.
And, and Mr. Mr. Fishman, I think the, the image that you, that we just held up, I think that is something we could achieve. So what we could do is we could come back, we could have a structure that would have that- that would have that paling look, but it could have that dark wood, that darker color to it to help it blend. The manufacturer, they've told us that they can basically replicate any kind of finish. I completely understand what you're looking for as far as limestone. You know, I've seen it everywhere around. So we could achieve that. I guess the feedback we were looking for is, would there be preference to have that blend of those materials? Or would you prefer to have that be basically that darker color, an entire structure that's all that, that paling look?
Well, I think, I'll let the rest of the board, and maybe our architect decide. I would prefer to have something that blends in and not have people say, what's that?
Absolutely.
And this is a, what's that building?
Absolutely. We would like that too. We would agree.
Okay, so...
Mr. Schneer.
A couple of questions. Mr. Stanford, so I understand, is this a manufacturer?
Yes, the building is a manufacturer.
The building and the equipment come from the same manufacturer?
Yes.
And so they have different sort of...
Configurations.
Configurations. Because I would take it in a different, slightly different direction. I lived for, you know, 35 years across the pond from the pump house for the golf course. And they enlarged it when it died. And it's this great little stone building. I mean, it's stone. And it's, I saw it, you know, out my window every morning, every afternoon, every evening. And it didn't blend in because it blended in. I mean, it was a small edifice in and of itself. If you look at, when you go across the dam, you know, there's those two little, there's those little buildings there, they fit in, but they're noticeable. But they're elegant.
I don't think this is going to be elegant. I don't think...
Well, that's why, I'm going to suggest, you know, if you went with a, with a stone structure that you saw from 745, and it was this neat little stone building that, you know, that looked like it was there forever, instead of attempting to hide it, because I don't think you can hide it, especially, you know, especially in the winter. And that little pump house was not used in emergencies, it was used all season, and I heard it. But it looked good. So it was, it was fine. So that would just be boy architect speaking with no domain expertise.
I agree with you 100%. If it, if it's, I see, I think a stone, limestone building would kind of blend in, okay? But it would be, as he just said, it would be nice looking. And it wouldn't be something to say, oh, why did somebody put something like that there? And as I said, you obviously had no problem looking at the pumps behind your house, right? Because they were stone type buildings. So, I, if it, I like what I was just shown. But also, probably my preference would be an all stone building that's not this kind of stone, that's limestone, and looks like it's been there for years.
So what you're suggesting is, is something similar on the left, that's the all stone buildup, but that pattern be, and the appearance be what we typically see as the traditional limestone that we see in this area?
And something to do with those doors, because those doors don't, are those going to be seen from 745, those doors? Oh, they're on the back, right?
They're on the rear.
Yeah, that's on the rear of the building.
So the neighbors will see those, right?
Well, not through the trees, but yeah, that's the way it would face.
Maybe you can paint those a limestone color, you know?
We would, we would do everything we can to help them blend.
Well, it is what it is. I just think we should do the best we can. And if there's plenty of landscaping there for the neighbors and the road, and it blends in again, it'd be fine. But...
And that's our goal too.
I agree with my colleague. I think that, that a stone building would look great if it was the right kind of stone, and it looked substantial and looked like it'd been there forever, not something you slapped in. It came in on a trailer. I thought, I think I saw a picture of this thing on wheels, yeah. It's a mobile home is what it is.
It's delivered that way. You're right.
So, okay.
Ms. Way.
So if I could go back to the beginning, I asked if you had a photograph of this chemical building, not the drawing, an actual photograph of what it looks like as a piece of equipment sitting out wherever.
All that I have currently is the...
Is the drawings.
The drawing, yeah.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to clarify that before. So, I have some fundamental issues with this whole plan. And I feel like you're pushing this building towards the road, when it should be back from the road, kind of where the existing one is. But I realize there's a floodplain. But I don't know what the floodplain elevation is, but you're building up the site anyway, I assume, out of the floodplain. So, I would like to see the building pulled back. And I don't know the relationship with this chemical thing, whether that could flip and be screened and be smaller and less intrusive, and the building further back. I'm really concerned about all the trees you're tearing down. I mean, there's Xs everywhere here. And when I look at the, I mean, it's, you know, it's a pretty substantial solid woodland. I'd like to see, wow, wow. Careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, this, it's screened, right? You've got some kind of enclosure around it. So, you know, and that can be done, so you're not going to see that tank necessarily. And maybe it can be screened better than in that picture. But I just think that the intrusion on this site is considerable. And, you know, landscape plan regardless, I don't think that's going to heal the loss of the woodland. And these are substantial trees, right? These are big trees. I do think that if you actually draw the trees in, that there's a space that's a clearing, that you could actually locate the building in, and without cutting down all the trees. Again, this is just conceptual. I just, I would, I'd like to see more rigor around inserting this building and facilities into the, this corner of woodlands, set back further from the road, as far as you can, and have it less impactful on this, on everything. The, this is the golf course, yeah, the golf course, 745, the neighborhood to the south. I just think the clear cutting of the trees is going to be a dramatic change. That's going to be hard to heal. So, that's where I was going with my initial, is can you rearrange the elements and think about, more closely about where the trees are, the clusters of trees that you're cutting down? And is there this sweet spot in the middle? And I don't know why that's clear right now, but it must be something to do with access to the existing pump station or whatever it is. So, again, those are, my concern is it's, I think that we could do a better job at the site plan. And then, I agree with the whole discussion down here. The residential looking building is totally out of place. It's got to be some kind of consistent material, whether it's a dark, and I think it needs to be, this is a utility, it should be 100 year facility, right? So it wants to be durable. It wants to be a material that's going to last, not that it's going to have to be replaced. So, you know, stone, maybe something that's, and again, I like the, you know, whatever it is, dark stone. But I think it could, it could be of a solid material like that and be much more successful.
Yeah, I agree.
And it doesn't have to have dormers on it.
Miss Call, I kind of like that.
It's just plain, and it fits in, and it blends in, and...
But I think the site plan is, I think, Mr. Way, that's real, I think that's really important. Because I said, my concern, when I went down there, then I walked up the road, I thought, gee, many Christmas people, this scenic road where the bridge is and the trees, all of a sudden you see this ugly building sitting there, you know? So...
Ms. Fox.
Because the city's doing this, and I know how much you care about this, I know you'll take these suggestions to heart, is there any reason that you think that you couldn't give some consideration to Mr. Way's thought about shifting? What do you think, Aaron? You've probably been out there a million times.
Yeah. Yeah, this is something that's been, you know, a few months in the working. And unfortunately, so Mr. Way, some of the things that are, that are forcing the location of that building, is that, that existing site is riddled with existing easements, existing utilities. There is a very small pocket of space that we can functionally locate that building. The other thing that's driving the location or forcing it to be in that location is the existing sanitary sewer that we're tying into. It needs to be connected to that building. So unfortunately, we do understand the environmental concerns. We do want to be as sensitive as we can, but we have to kind of partner that with giving us something that is functional in that area. So while we would, we would love to be able to take all of those things into consideration, when we looked at the site, there were some constraints that we just unfortunately kind of forced the building to be exactly where it was. That in conjunction, also, the other thing that we were trying to do with the building is being, you know, sensitive to the existing residential structures around the area, and then also the golf course. So we were, we were trying, and our plan development is just to balance all of those things. You know, obviously for us on our end, for the project, it has to be functional. So those things kind of overrode a lot of those things is, you know, how do we functionally get it connected? Existing utilities or in the area, those constraints kind of drove the location of the building.
If I could ask just one quick question. How would it affect the schedule of the project if we were to bring this back one more time? And I'll ask you, and then I'll ask them, because I know our schedule is pretty full for the rest of the year.
I think, I think the fair answer, it would heavily impact the schedule. I think the other thing that we have going on at the same time, is we have the property acquisition that will need to go to council, that we've been negotiating with the golf club. The other thing that we have going on is the bidding schedule, and then also we have permitting that needs to get started. The other thing that we have going on with the project is environmental permitting that we have started in that process, that, you know, the clock starts ticking on a lot of those things. So, you know, our goal, our hope and our goal is, unless it's absolutely necessary, we would love to get this through tonight and find a solution that will work for everybody. So honestly, that's, that's our honest feedback on the schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford. Back to you, Ms. Fox.
Yeah. You're caught between a rock and a hard place. I agree. I think that whenever you have a structure like this, especially on a scenic road, you need to do whatever you can to make this look like it's a natural thing that has a timelessness to it. I don't want to hold you up. I do think if you're going to remove as many trees, as Mr. Way said, that under these circumstances, the replacement trees should be pretty good size. I don't know what's planned in here, but some little small calipers tree, it would be nice to get at least right at the front, not necessarily, you know, the others will grow, but the ones that are right on the road, whatever you bring down, you better put something up big.
So larger caliber trees between the building and the existing roadway?
Right. I think that what, you know, it's going to create an impact. Let's not let 10 years go by before we make this thing kind of like become camouflage. Let's just try to give it a little boost and, and spend a little bit of money upfront and get this landscaping done so that it looks like it's maybe been there for a while. I trust, I know what goes on in planning in between you. I trust that this is going to be good. You've heard the comments, if it looks like these, well then you'll have to come back in front of us. It won't go well.
Understood. Take it off the wheels, at least.
We show you driving it down the hill. No, but I mean, I believe that you know what it is. And I know how planning is. They're pretty picky. So, you know, you've heard the comments, so I'm okay with it.
Well, it's going to be there another 40 years, just like the other one was. And so, I think it's something that, but I would really insist on, on screening it with evergreen trees in the front, often 745 at least. The golf course side, you can put decorative trees, but 745, so people don't turn their head and say, what was that building? You know? And, and so, and I think that, hearing my colleagues, I think that I'm in favor of all stone, no siding, and, but not that stone, okay?
Understood.
It's Dublin stone.
You're looking for a limestone appearance.
Yeah. And they make it in stucco stone, you know? So, but not little squares, you know, stone.
Absolutely, understood.
We build the bridges and stuff, yeah.
Has there been any public comment received on this item?
Mr. Way, do you have any more comments?
There is not.
Thank you, Mr. Housh. Mr. Way.
I just wanted to go back to the removal of trees. And really, they're all being taken out. And there's some trees along the road that are, there's a 22 inch cotton wood, a 16 inch cotton wood, 14 inch cotton wood. If you could save the trees that are closest to the road, and I know they're trees and they're big, and they're probably just, you know, they're, they're tall, right? So, I think just keeping some trees along the road, if you could, would help to mitigate perhaps the other intrusion. And, and I, again, I'm speculating because that's where you have your building. And that's why I said, could you pull the building back to at least start to look at saving some trees? And of course, your grading plan also is just mass grading, so that's just taking trees out too. So, if you could be more precise with the grading and more limiting, or maybe the drive comes down, you lower it a little bit so that you're not having to fill so much. I mean, there's all sorts of things you could do, but you're basically, from what I'm reading in this plan, just mowing down all the trees back into the site and to accommodate the facility. And I think that is going to, it's just going to be a wound on, on the road, so.
So if I may, Brian Gable, Deputy Director of Engineering over Design and Construction. Aaron's hit on some of our points. So, the biggest factor in the location is the manhole that's pretty much in the center of the diagram, yes. That one's at the intersection of several sanitary sewers that are tributary to this system. So that is our manhole we must attach to. If we were to modify the location of that manhole, that would require further excavation back onto the site, further causing issues to more trees. The second issue is, we had to analyze the floodplain within the site. So, the floodplain as shown is a unstudied floodplain in general. It's generally noted. So, we did provide further study of that. Yeah, that is the Army Corps or FEMA's unstudied floodplain. So we studied a bit, a bit more detailed to provide an actual analysis of, you know, so we know how much fill or not fill we're doing to obviously make that a neutral zero fill condition. So, the third thing is, there is an overhead power line in the front of the property that will certainly limit the size of these trees. Most of these trees have been cut along everybody's favorite frontage. So you see the nice trunk of the tree with no, with very little green, you know, branches coming toward the roadway in this location. So part of it was to get trees that would grow that wouldn't grow to where our, our utility companies would, you know, cut the tops off of them. So we're doing the best we can to provide greenage and to basically facade the building with greenway. And again, like we discussed, the manufacturer's very open to making modifications and even maybe doing materials he hasn't previously done before. They're, they're open to that. So I imagine if we wanted more of a limestone facade, we can certainly work towards that way. The last thing I wanted to present is, the site is heavily covered by utilities. So it's not only the sanitary, we have multiple water lines in this area. Obviously, the existing structure is a water, previously was a water booster station, it's no longer needed due to, I believe, the water tower just to the north. You know, so there are several water lines that are in the area as well as several crossings of sanitary lines, which certainly does limit our, our access to the site and the locations we can select for the system. So, the two larger circles in the ground there that you're seeing beside the pavement are actually wet wells that are, that are in the ground and buried. So those are the main systems that we have to initiate the overall forced main portion of the project. And the building houses the rest of that equipment to perform that work. So, the northern side of the site also has telecom and underground AEP, as well as the Muirfield Village itself, the golf clubs, golf courses further to the northwest. So, the site is pretty well restricted in a lot of its locations and available space that we have to be able to utilize.
Any other comments? Lift stations are not new to me. I am from out west, and in mountainous regions, we have lift stations all over my former city, one affectionately called the Purple Monster. So, I understand, especially in a highly eased property, that there are certainly restrictions. We do appreciate, and we, we appreciate your hearing us and then future acting on the recommendations of the commission, the requirements and the requests of the commission to make sure that as little disturbance to the foliage, the greenery, the established trees is done, to ensure that we have quality materials that help that building to look worthy of Dublin. And we know that you want that just as much as... And we know that you want that just as much as we do and, and they want that just as much as we do. So it would be my personal opinion that we could delegate this and, and move forward on this item tonight with the understanding that staff who knows us well, works with you, Mr. Sanford, and, and the rest of the engineering department to ensure that the requests made this evening are honored. Mr. Fishman?
Can you, Mike? Mike?
How much blacktop is going to be around this thing?
So we tried to do as little as we, as we could physically for the site. So it was mainly just returns and access for a vehicle to be able to turn around. To fill the tank is kind of the main concern is that that vehicle is not, it's not large, but it's not small. So we want to be able to ensure that they're not going to be backing up into the area. So the, the staff report had the, the entire new square footage, including the drive, was 1,700 square feet, but that includes the building and the boxside tank. So I don't know offhand the exact footage of the pavement. Did the, I think the report listed that out.
So the new driveway would be 1,524 square feet?
Thank you, Zach.
That comes straight off of Dublin Road, I assume from this picture, right?
Correct. So the existing site access is to the north using the shared use path. And it's actually gated and you have to cross into Muirfield's property to be able to get onto that. The weight of these vehicles to be able to provide maintenance to the site would be a significant detriment to that shared use path and would require fairly consistent maintenance, we believe, to upgrade it. So the, the only other choice there would be to somehow provide a betterment in that area, which we think would be detrimental overall to the access.
But the only blacktop is coming right off the road, this, this little driveway here then, right?
Correct.
That's the only drop, blacktop on the, on the whole site?
On, on this site, yes. The, the orange is the only blacktop.
The what?
The, the orange color on the screen is the only blacktop, correct.
What's, what's that for?
That, that's, that's the drive to the, to the rear of the site to.
Okay, so there's, there's actually two drives then, is what you're saying?
No. So, Mr. Fishman, the apron that you see along Dublin, Dublin Road that goes back to the building footprint is the only asphalt on this property.
Okay, well, so what, what is the orange side then?
The orange is the drive. Is it, is it yellow on your screen? I'm sorry. It looks orange on our screen.
Yeah, okay, there's an orange thing there too, and I thought, geez, you're going to put it.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, got it, got it. Okay.
And, Mr. Fishman, one of the things, we did talk in that area, so just for reference, that's one of the areas that we narrowed up was the asphalt pavement. The, the throat of that driver, the area where you come in, is only 12 feet wide. So that's, that's your, in Dublin, that's your typical one lane width. That, that's all the wider that is, which is much smaller than most residential driveways. So even in that area, we, we narrowed that up, we focused on that area just to reduce the grading, reduce the impact. So that's, it's about as, as little of asphalt as you can place and still be able to access the structure and properly maintain it.
How long is it from the road to?
One second. So there are a few dimensions on there. From, from the edge of the roadway, it's, it's roughly 55 feet. Is that right? No, 71? Does that say 71 or 77, Zach, to the center line?
So that dimension is, it says 71.8 feet, but that's from the center line.
Okay.
So it would be probably about 50, 55 feet.
Yeah.
Well, if you take Mr. Way's suggestion, push it back, the building back, it'd be longer, but it'd be, there'd be bigger opportunity to put trees on either side of it.
Well, I still think, so I thought, when, you know, looking at that, that site plan and listening to the, the suggestions, I think there are opportunities that we can achieve those things that you're, you're asking for. You know, when I look at the landscaping plan, you know, one of the things I see as far as, you know, the landscaping along that building, those are low-lying shrubs. Can we find a solution that is something more vertical that provides not only landscaping, but more vertical screening? Absolutely. I mean, when I just look at that, that's one, I think that's an easy win for us to kind of achieve those things and it's, it's not difficult, I think, for us to do. Are there pockets where we could supplement that area with some additional trees? Absolutely. Now, what I, what I do want to do is, is be honest, what, there are going to be some constraints with overhead power lines, with existing utilities that are underneath. But when I look at that, I think there are some, there are some easy things that I can see off the bat that we could do to modify that landscaping plan in a pretty easy way that would achieve the, all of the comments and concerns that I'm hearing from the commission.
I'd rather see trees than shrubs, by the way. Trees get better, shrubs go bad.
Understood.
Any final comments from the commission? Seeing none, verifying one more time, no public comment. Thank you. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve a text modification.
I'll move to make the text modification.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes. We have a second motion to approve the amended final develop, development plan with three conditions. Is there any discussion before we move forward with the motion?
Could you read the, my thing is, yeah, I wanted to see.
They're presented. So the application, work with staff to select final exterior materials for the prefabricated structure, specifically a dark neutral tone, neutral stone and siding facade material. I believe we, we got rid of that, looking to the commission for confirmation.
I think you should take out the dark part. I think you should, I think you should refer back to the conversation here because I think you're limiting him if it's a dark neutral stone.
Right.
You heard the conversation. To be able to work with staff, based on the conversation and planning, commission.
Yeah, I like that. You get the idea and the more general would be better than specifics in this condition.
Has the, has the commission had opportunity to read through the amended three conditions?
On the third one, obviously you're going to identify existing trees can be preserved on-site, but alter the landscape plan to, I don't know if the word's hide, whatever the word is, you're going to look at, how are we going to do that? More trees in the front, pockets of, to better.
To improve the.
To improve the.
Landscape plan.
Appearance to Dublin Road.
Based on the planning and zoning discussion.
And I think that's covered in condition two, right? It says the applicant work with staff to finalize the landscape plan.
Okay.
To provide an additional buffer along Dublin Road.
Okay.
And so we can incorporate those items discussed.
That sounds good.
Do you need, because of two, do you need three? Is it a sep, do you think it's a distinct message?
So I think three is very specific and targeted, right? We want to have a crucial conversation about which trees, if any, can be retained through more selective grading or alternative tree preservation methods.
Okay. Ms. Hannah, my 12th grade English teacher, would say that in number one, it should be final exterior materials, which address instead of addresses.
And while you're doing that, can you capitalize the second B at the, the start of the, I wasn't going to say anything, but since you have to edit anyway, we had capitalized, non-capitalized, capitalized.
I have one other comment.
Yes, Mr. Way?
I, I have a concern that the, the screening for this tank is going to be different than the building. So is there a way to put language in there that maybe it's color, you know, just the color is consistent? I don't know if you can put stone around the tank or whatever that, the mason, the material will be on the building, but from a color standpoint, because I don't know if it says already what, it's just a wood slat, right? Is that what it says?
Yeah, it's a, it's a wooden screening fence, so it'd be a slat fence, but it will also have additional landscaping around it as well.
But the color to match the, the larger building.
Is the screening included in the landscape plan?
We can certainly make it.
So if, if we could do that, then it's work with staff to make.
So you're saying the wood slats are part of the landscape plan?
That's what we could make it.
Is that right? The fencing is part of the landscape plan? Okay. Got you.
I will entertain a motion to approve the amended final development plan with amended three conditions.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sanford. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Onto item four, penalty code amendment 21-113ADN, administrative request. This application is an introduction to consider updates to the residential development standards, including the minimum requirement applicable to new residential development. Ms. Martin, welcome.
Sorry, I like the podium really tall. I don't have to hunch over.
I, I didn't even realize that it raised, so taught me something new today.
Okay. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for review and a recommendation of approval to City Council for revisions to the penalty code set forth in chapter 153 of the City of Dublin codified ordinances. The intent of this proposed code modification is to address unforeseen conditions resulting from an unauthorized demolition of historic structures within historic Dublin. In review of the penalty associated with that offense, it was determined that it was inadequate and in need of revision as it has not been revisited in a number of years. The proposal before the commission this evening is to revise the existing fine for all penalties from a minor misdemeanor with a fee of $100 to a fourth degree misdemeanor, which could potentially be penalized every day that the offense is occurring. So specifically in regards to the historic unauthorized alterations and demolitions, there is an escalation clause. The escalation is should you offend more than two times, two separate times in five years, your fourth degree misdemeanor would be elevated to a second degree misdemeanor. As shown on the screen are the existing regulations as well as the proposed regulations. The important item to note here is that even though jail time is a potential penalty associated with this, in many cases, staff would anticipate that the jail time would be suspended in lieu of conditions placed on that, that property owner. So in review of this application, both staff and the Architecture Review Board are recommending approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission this evening and that this be forwarded to City Council at a future meeting date.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Looking to the question for questions at this time. Ms. Fox?
You know, I know that the existing says this, assist in the violation of any of the provisions of this chapter who fails to comply, who builds in violation, who builds in violation of any statement planned, submitted and provided under, whoever constructs, reconstructs, alters, modifies, or demolishes any exterior architectural feature. I, I have a little problem with the penalty because of the fact that, and maybe it's the way it's worded. I, I understand where you're going with this. You do not want demolition of historic, of, of historic structures. But I also don't believe that we should overly burden people who live in the historic district or own property, properties on appendix G to the point that they are afraid to touch the trim on their house. And, and honestly, what will happen is that people won't comply, they'll just do, hidden because it's so broad and it's so vague. The other thing that concerns me about this is this specifically speaks to the historic district and properties on appendix G. And I watched the ARB meeting and as Mr. Holton said, who's president of the Historic Society, there was recently, we have historic properties all over Dublin, many of them hidden, many of them aren't even on the historic and cultural assessment. This particular one, where the log cabin was found buried within the house, and I was in this little smokehouse, it was pristine. I mean, it hadn't been touched in 200 years and they knocked it down. But there's no penalty for them. But the people here who unfortunately are under appendix G or happen to be in the historic district and lived there for years are constantly being laid penalty after penalty after penalty on them and quite a few responsibilities to maintain the property. They cannot get off appendix G. We're not asking anyone, we don't ask anyone to get on appendix G because we know they won't get on it. So I worry about the oppressiveness of this. I do think, though, we should speak to historic properties and the cultural assessment. And if we're going to do it, if we're going to penalize people for destroying historic properties, I think it should be a citywide thing and not just targeted to a few. And I don't know how you can do that. I mean, honestly, I don't know how you can do that. But I do worry, and maybe, I don't live in the historic district, but I, I, I know all my neighbors are feeling as if the historic district has become too hard to do anything in. So I worry about lifting this to a fourth degree misdemeanor. So I'm not for doing this right now. I do think it can take some study. I think it's too broad. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Yeah. And so before we go into further discussion, just an item for consideration is we are not proposing to alter any zoning regulations or any, any items that a property owner would be otherwise required to comply with. This is really just an update to the penalty should a property owner, and it is anywhere in the city, violate a section of the zoning code. We do tailor some specific additional regulations to historic demolition, but the revision to the penalty section applies to every part of the city should you make an error against the code.
Are we painting a broad brush just to be able to make sure we don't lose a historic structure? And then I also asked the question of you, is there a double standard here? Because the city, we asked that the cities, all of their historic properties are put on appendix G. Yet, as I mentioned before, we have a historic property that was before us that was just said to be demolished. And I don't know that anybody in the city is going to go to jail. I mean, I, and I know that that wasn't our own property at the time. But I guess what I'm saying is, is that there's a lot of ramifications to lifting it to a misdemeanor, a fourth degree misdemeanor. I just think there might be a better way to protect the historic properties than maybe through an understanding, maybe people, we don't do anything to incentivizing the preservation of them, but we'll penalize them if you destroy them. But there's nothing there that we can help them try to save their property in a way. Even in the historic district, these things take a lot of maintenance and I, I just feel as if this is broad and without helping people maintain things, instead of being careful about maintaining, they're going to be afraid to touch anything and so that they won't maintain it all. And I just. And I just, I just worry about that aspect of it because I know how it is right now. People, they just fix them because they don't, they don't want to go through all of the headaches of the ARB. And I just think this is another layer of burdensomeness for them.
Yeah.
Mr. Schneer.
Mr. Boggs, because I have a property in historic Dublin, does that pose potential conflict to discuss this?
Well, I would say no, because whatever, while your property is within the boundaries of historic Dublin, this is not anything that is unique to your property as opposed to any other property in historic Dublin. And I don't see any reasonable basis for believing that this penalty provision would have any particular benefit or detriment to your property that would be different than any other property in the historic district.
Thank you.
A question, Ms. Martin. So looking at the cost of $100 and the cost of $750, $250, $750, typically speaking, our fines are there for a reason. Either they're punitive, which $100 really, or they're to recoup cost lost by the city, or they're to recoup part costs. What is the reason? How is this being brought before us? So is this administrative saying, we're having a problem, we're having to administer? Is this, how is this coming before us tonight?
So I'll speak to how this came before you, and then I'm going to let Thad speak to the structure and scaling of misdemeanors, right? Because the fourth-degree misdemeanor is the lowest, even though it's the higher number. And then we can talk about jail fees, conditions. But this is really before you because most unfortunately this year, we had two unauthorized demolitions of historic structures. It was an Appendix G property. The very tragic thing, right, is as soon as you demolish a historic structure, you can never replace it. And so it's not meant to be punitive. It really is just meant to provide a penalty that is equal to the violation of the code. So a historic chicken coop and a historic spring house were lost. The Law Director's Office, in conjunction with the Planning Division and the Office of the City Manager, decided not to pursue charges because of the existing penalty, which is a $100 fine. So they would have been, should we have used the city's resources to press charges, they would have been penalized $200. And so revising the penalty system provides more latitude for the Law Director's Office to negotiate resolutions in the favor of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Boggs, do you have anything to add?
Yes. Just to your question about the fine amounts, those are established as the maximum fine amounts for fourth-degree misdemeanors, for example, just by law. And because they are fines to a criminal offense, their purposes are not really compensation to the city. If there were a circumstance where the city suffered economic harm, we could separately get restitution. The fines themselves serve two primary purposes, punishment and deterrence. And what we were lacking under the current code, I think, is both elements.
Thank you, Mr. Boggs. Looking back to the commission, Mr. Schneer?
Just in the, currently, it's a, the fine is, would be $100 one time. By changing the classification, it goes to 250 per occurrence and each day would be an occurrence. Is that accurate?
That is correct. Now, as you may know, we'd have to prove and charge each separate day as a separate occurrence. So you have separate complaints that go through the mayor's court. We have to prove each day. The other challenge with something that is a demolition is, once it's demolished, every day is an occurrence until the end of time. So there is sort of a balancing act there of, okay, I'm going to go to the trouble of proving 10 separate days, let's say, but that would put up to $2,500 in fine on the table.
Yeah. So I don't like sloppy, I'm not saying this is sloppy, but just things that we, verbiage that requires later interpretation. So two points. One is because of that nature, you know, the pollution, $1,000 a day kind of, you know, thing, I wonder if it might be better to have a different schedule for a demolition, which is a set amount, something, so that it's higher than the 250, but you don't have to, so it is a deterrent. If $100 is not a deterrent, 250 is not going to be a deterrent. The only way it's a financial deterrent is if, if it, you have multiple offenses, which to your point, requires additional effort, and it goes, it could go on forever. So one way to do that is to have a different structure for demolition. And to Ms. Fox's point, maybe there ought to be just a separate call out for demolition. So because this was, my understanding from the memo, I mean, it was precipitated by demolition. So it's not to get other people caught up in the web. There could be a provision that just refers to demolition, and it's, and I don't have a lot of empathy for people who demol, I mean, it's like, that's pretty binary. I tore this down. I didn't know, really, you should have known, versus I painted my windows, you know, I should have known or didn't know. I think it's, I think we can, there's a wide gap between those two. So there could be language that just refers to demolition with a heavier fine and would require, of course, now a definition of demolition, if it's not already in the code, but may already be in the code, but something about, you know, substantial, more than whatever, so that, you know, what, it was a demolition.
Yeah, I think that's. And you're getting five head nods up here. Okay. I think that's a great point and something we definitely considered. I know that when I look at these monetary values, I'm sufficiently underwhelmed. The, the reason that we did not pursue a finite number for a demolition fine, whatever that be, $1,500, $3,000, $10,000, is because the intent here, as Mr. Boggs said, is not to recoup costs, right? The city has not lost any monetary value as a result of the demolition. This really is a penalty within the court. And so what we do get is you'll notice under the minor misdemeanor, there's no jail time. And the jail time is really important because it allows the official presiding over that determination to add conditions to their finding. So yes, you have to pay $250, that's very negligible, but I, the mayor, presiding over mayor's court, find that your jail, your 30-day jail time shall be suspended, provided that you do these three things. And those can be very tailored to what the situation is, which is why using a, kind of a very consistent measuring stick that we can then tailor on the back end was the kind of the approach that Planning and the Law Director took together.
So Ms. Martin, what might those three things be in the case of a demolition, though?
So Thad, you came up with some good examples before.
Let's see if I can remember them in the case of a demolition. Well, one of the, at least one of the examples that comes to mind is not just for an outright demolition, but we also do have alteration of structure. So one of the conditions could be, we're going to impose a $250 fine, we're going to impose, we're going to suspend 15 days in jail. And the condition of that jail time being suspended is that you have two months to return that altered property to its historic, you know, integral state. Prove that to me, and then I'll wipe out the jail entirely. So something to kind of hang over a person's head to motivate them, which is common in a lot of these misdemeanor criminal prosecutions, because there are only so many tools that you have in mayor's court and in misdemeanor offenses to get people to change their behavior. In terms of a demolition, depending on the nature of the, of the particular structure, maybe it would be appropriate to require some kind of reconstruction of it in a historically, in a manner with historic integrity. I think that that's sort of the wiggle in the joints that we wanted to preserve for code enforcement, the prosecutor, and for the mayor's court magistrate.
So, if I may, to me, I see three different things. I see a minor alteration, I'm painting something, I'm replacing my windows, I'm doing whatever, normal home maintenance, normal home updates. Number two is I'm significantly altering the structure. I'm adding on a room, a garage, an expansion, and demolition, I'm tearing it down. And to me, if we're looking at deterrence, number three has the largest deterrent. Number two has a significant deterrent. Number one, I'm fine with the existing, the really, if somebody doesn't know that their paint color isn't right, the cost of new paint is going to be in excess of $100.
Right. And I.
And the other thing that I would note is, as I'm looking at our specific board order language, so this is talking about alterations, work that is done in violation of the chapter, meaning all of 153. And so in historic district, you're talking about things that require a board order. If you don't, if it is a maintenance item that doesn't require a board order, then you're absolutely fine, you're playing under the same rules that you're playing under today. It's just when people do things that they should have gotten board orders for, but they neglect to do so. And, and the thinking being, you know, that the city has invested a lot of, of time and resources into studying its built environment, having these cultural and historical assessments, creating the entire ARB structure, and so ensuring that that process is respected.
And then just the last thing I would add, really citywide, we do not jump to the penalty section. It is, unless you've demolished something where it's very binary, we would work with you to find a resolution, and that's through both zoning enforcement and code enforcement. And I know that I've personally had conversations with people, working them toward code compliance voluntarily. And sometimes those conversations take a year before we would even begin to employ the penalty section. So it is just meant to, when our negotiations and our constructive conversations stall, we do need a viable mechanism to move the needle.
Thank you, Ms. Martin and Mr. Boggs. Looking back to the commission, Mr. Schneer, I think you had some excellent points.
Well, I, Mr. Boggs, I think your example exemplified my concern is that the, the alteration, the distinction between demolition alteration, it just gives, in my opinion, too much judicial discretion in the mayor's court for these kinds of remedies. So it could be, it could be a minor alteration, but the mayor's court has, has the same discretion as if it were a demolition. And I think in historic district, unlike other parts of the city, you know, a lot of things require board approval, but don't require board approval, board meaning ARB elsewhere. So, you know, we sort of jocular about painting a different color. You paint your house in a different color, you're in violation of, you know, of a board order that specified what color you can paint your exterior. So you would be caught up, I think, in that. And now the whole panoply of penalties and judicial discretion, I think, you know, Ms. Call, I think your taxonomy is spot on. I mean, there's, there's the intentional but inadvertent, you know, like, and it's not, it's, you think it's maintenance, but you did something that is out, that technically violates, you know, the order, an order. You add a garage on, it's like, sort of shame on you, and you demo, and I think that's a big one. So I was talking about maybe two buckets, maybe there are three buckets, which would, if, 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 I'm not presuming here, but if that were to be the sentiment of the commission, it would suggest that we sort of throw this back and work on it as a subcommittee or something.
I would agree with that. Can I just respond, like, with an example? Because I think examples are helpful for us to talk this through, like, how it would actually work. Because sometimes on paper, it's either not enough, or it's too much, or whatever. But so say I live in historic Dublin, and I have been approved by the board to paint my house white.
Can we not pick on historic Dublin, but rather pick a different?
Well, I think for the, the purposes of Mr. Schneer's example, that's why I picked historic Dublin, but, and I think it's pertinent here with Mr. Boggs's board orders. So I've been authorized by the board to paint my house white. I go to the store and I pick up a can of blue paint and decide to go on my merry way and have my painter paint my whole house. It comes to my neighbor's attention or staff's attention, and the city makes contact with that property owner and says, hey, I noticed you painted your house blue. Our records indicate that you were approved for white. Basically, do you have different information, or can you provide a little bit of explanation as to, you know, how we got to where we are? And they say, oh, you know, I, I just thought I could go ahead and do it. And so, right, then there's an opportunity for a little bit of education. And then there's the conversation about, well, you know, this does require a board order approval. We'd be happy to help you open an application if you'd like to get the blue approved by the ARB. And then as part of that, staff would review whether or not blue is appropriate based on, right, historic color palettes. But we would lead them to getting their change memorialized versus mailing them a penalty. It really is like, I painted my house blue, I changed my phone number and ignored the city for 18 months, and I, I now, you know, refuse to acknowledge that I ever did anything wrong. So that's kind of where this works.
Yeah. And I think where we're struggling is, if you go back to Mr. Boggs' statement, we have two items here. We have penalty and we have deterrent. We don't want to deter the person from replacing their windows, painting their trim, everything else, upkeep to their property by language that you had to explain to us, and we're here twice a month, versus the person who has a home and therefore doesn't want to maintain the property because they fear that they're going to be taken to court and get charged and thrown in jail for 30 days, because that's how they read it.
And that discretion, the staff's discretion, which is appropriately utilized, is not codified. So, I mean, I got.
And it can't be.
Right. So I have a big problem with the fact that, you know, these are the Ten Commandments. I mean, this is like, it's a shall not. And, you know, a different staff at a different point, you know, all of a sudden, you're getting a certified letter that it's now day 22 of this, because, I mean, the language talks about alters, you know, modify. talks about alters, you know, modifies, I mean, paint color, doorknobs, I mean, so we have to, I, I think we have to be careful and not rely on discretion.
That's right. I agree.
And to the detriment, you know, of, of a homeowner, and to the detriment of staff in this commission, because we're going to be setting precedent on an ad hoc basis.
Mr. Fishman.
I, I, I agree 100% with what you're saying, but I guess that what bothers me, first of all, I've been to some of the ARB meetings, and it, I, for years, from 1977, I was on the Muirfield Design Review Board, and Lance has lived in Muirfield. And the difference in, in Muirfield is, they have color palettes. In other words, you go into this room and they say, this is what you can paint your house, and, and, and you pick one, and, and that's fine. If you don't like it, pick another one, but it's got to be of this palette. And they're, they're responding. With the, the downtown Dublin, they don't have color palettes. They just say, you can't do this. And like Lance is saying, it, it's objective.
Yeah.
So what I bothers me is, I think that, that painting window trim, by the way, paint's cheap. If you paint the wrong color, you can paint it another color, okay? A trim, doorknobs, new windows, some of those old houses down there, they don't make the kind of window that, 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 that you, if you want to replace with the exact same window. So I have the same problem Lance does. I think that, that, that we've, if, if they wanted, you want to have penalties like this, you got to make it a crime, okay? You've got to make it something that they intentionally did that was contrary to the betterment of, of the city and, and the Historic District. Tearing a house down, that's a whole different story. On the other hand, if, you get a penalty for tearing a house down. So what do you do? Make a rebuild a house, just like, take the rubbish and put it back up and rebuild it? Or does, the way I read it, doesn't it continue, it goes daily, right? So as long as the house is torn down, you're, the things, pretty soon, you owe $50,000 in fines and-
Yeah. It couldn't continue on infinitely.
What?
I said it could not continue on infinitely because the law director's office would have to prove that each day that homeowner made a deliberate action against the code. So unfortunately-
But if he did make a deliberate action, maybe he walked in that place and he said, we, we got to tear it down. I mean, it, it, you might as well tear it down. Okay? So he made a deliberate action, so when does the fine stop? Does he just get sentenced to 20 years in jail and?
No. So the, so in that, sorry, you go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that, to the point about this sort of indefinite violation, just from a practical standpoint, and perhaps, you know, we could put a cap on that says each, each day is a separate violation up to 10 days or up to 15 days, whatever the right number is. From a practical standpoint, the court doesn't want to be processing a, you know, October 13th and October 14th and October 15th violation. Our prosecutor doesn't want to have to be proving it. Our code enforcement officer doesn't want to have to be, you know, documenting her time there every day. So I, I would not, from a practical standpoint, worry about some extended, you know, unbelievable fine because we just kind of sit on our case and then all of a sudden we dump 100 complaints on somebody. If it increases your comfort level with that type of process, we can make it whatever you think the appropriate number could be, 5, 10. From the, just from the perspective of working within the criminal law system that we have, and, you know, these are not always great tools tailored to what we want if we are creating the system from scratch, right? We can only impose a fine up to, to $1,000, but to do that, we have to make it a first degree misdemeanor, which carries even more potential jail time. We have these sort of prescribed levels of misdemeanor offense that are available to the city. We can also always take civil action, but then, of course, that involves an entirely different court process, a different level of expense. So we're always trying to balance, okay, what is the action here? Somebody who does something inadvertently, they're not getting caught up in a dragnet. Somebody who repeatedly fails to respond to the city, fails to correct items that have been identified for them, that is who, you know, this code is written for. We, we have written it, and I think the existing code is written to that sort of lowest common denominator, but the $100 fine is out of date.
Another question. Okay, first of all, what I don't understand, I, it just kind of puzzles me. Okay, guy comes and he tears his house down with the intention of building a new house, okay? Well, the, doesn't Historic District have a design review thing to build the new one? Doesn't he have to get that approved?
But you can demolish it.
Okay, but if, if, if it is, if it is to the point that it has to be demolished, let's say.
Then it has to be approved to be demolished.
Okay, so he gets it approved to be demolished, okay? And he's following the law. And then when he builds the new one, he also has to get that approved, right?
Right.
Okay, so it's obviously the burden of the board to make sure it looks like it's historic and fits and it's not too big and all that stuff, right? Okay? Now, you're saying that, but I agree with Lance, we should have three buckets. We shouldn't be fining people for painting their window trim, but we might, should be fining people pretty heavily if they intentionally tear their house down. And experts on the board and so on say, it shouldn't be torn down, okay? So I think that's what we have to have, I think you mentioned the buckets, we should have, you know, several buckets and say, the only, the only fine for, I mean, in Muirfield, they, they charge a guy, if he does a blatant violation, it's 50 bucks a day until he comes in for a little hearing, and then he says, they said, you, you picked the wrong color. We had a lady paint her whole house bright blue, for example, and, and she said the guy picked the wrong card, you know, on the painter. She went on vacation and came back with dark blue. But, but, so they gave her an opportunity to repaint the house, and she did. Okay, now, so I, I think that, that, that your heart's in the right place, and I think there should be heavy penalties for a guy that has a perfectly good house in the Historic District, it looks historic, it could be rehabbed, and he tears it down, okay? But I think we certainly need to separate that from a guy that does the wrong color trim on his windows, or puts a pella window in instead of a, you know, whatever, so.
To me, you know, I, I threw out the three buckets for the minor versus the alteration versus, we have three buckets on the screen. Right now, the existing, has the existing had issues with the type of minor thing that we're talking about, the painting the trim, the, you know, maintenance and that sort of thing? Has staff had any issue with that type of violation with this type of penalty?
So I think, for the most part, we work with people collaboratively, and we will honestly spend a year trying to work with them to bring them into compliance before we even get to this code. So no, we've not pursued a minor misdemeanor charge for anyone on any part of the spectrum. And I, I do agree, I think we can, based on all this really good discussion, we can revisit some of these things. I know Thad probably already has some ideas. Just like we don't want to be overburdening and overpenalizing, I think we should also, one of the things staff became unfortunately aware of is, does our existing penalty code incentivize non-code compliance?
Understood. So I, I think we're hearing a lot of conversation tonight, and we're not comfortable where it is.
Yes, oh my god, of course.
But, yeah. But I think that we can get there.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we could, you know, any final comments from the, the commission, and then go back, make alterations and bring it forward again? Ms. Boggs?
Just real quick, in the ARB code, there are demolition criteria, and there is no listing there for penalty. What I think is difficult when you live in the Historic District is that the code is spread out all over the place, and there's guidelines, and there's code, and you live in the Historic District, and you don't know where they are and what they are. So two things are important. One, that, one, that we begin to educate people who own these historic properties. I think that's so very important. Two, they should have a pamphlet, and everybody should be given the handbook of the code and the guidelines, because otherwise, they're going to make the mistake and end up being in trouble. And third, I think that the penalty should not be placed in as vague as this, I agree with Lance, but maybe where the demolition is. I think we try to focus on demolition of all historic properties in Dublin, because I do think that we have a very small Appendix G in comparison to the number of historic structures. So I think, you know, that's a larger conversation, but, because we would have never been able to stop even with this, what happened with that little smokehouse. So those are the only thing.
All right. For due diligence, have any public comments come in on the web since we've been discussing?
No, there was one public comment submitted in advance of your meeting, encouraging support for this application. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any final comments? All right. Moving on to Case 5, Solar Panel Code Amendment, 21152 ADM Administrative Request. This application is an introduction of code amendment to establish general regulations in regards to solar panels for residential and commercial properties. Thanks for bringing this back, by the way. That application that had it on it helped spark some gears turning.
Of course, of course. And I, I hope this is a fun one for us to end the evening on, honestly, right? We're not asking for any sort of determination or recommendation. This is really supposed to be a facilitated conversation. Staff has drafted no language for you to respond to. It really is just to have a baseline understanding of the commission's thoughts, particularly on solar energy, as this has been an increasingly prevalent request in both commercial and residential applications. So just for a bit of background, the City of Dublin Code addresses renewable energy equipment and solar energy in a very limited manner today. The definition set forth in the code is provided on your screen. There are only two zoning districts that specifically provide and permit solar energy as well as other renewable energy solutions. That's the Bridge Street District and the West Innovation District. Those uses have use-specific standards to make sure they're appropriately designed and integrated, and then they also have to be accessory to the use. And then finally, our accessory structures section of the code identifies solar panels, but it's very much in passing, and it's not defined as an accessory structure and does not have any associated use-specific standards. So to really begin to tackle this topic, staff conducted benchmark research of a number of communities locally in central Ohio, as well as three communities in Cincinnati and one in the Indianapolis region. So of all the communities surveyed, and the questions were defined for you in your memo, about 50% of all of these jurisdictions allowed a variety of alternative energy solutions, so solar, wind, and geothermal. This evening, we'll be focusing specifically on solar, as that is where the bulk of the city's requests are. Two of these communities regulate solar panels as accessory structures, which conceptually, I think, may be an appropriate place for us to locate this in our code. And then the review type really varied, depending on the location in the city. Worthington only requires review if it's in the Historic District. Some communities allow for building permit only, like Carmel, Indiana. They were trying to be part of an incentive program to incentivize solar energy solutions, and so they felt that no to limited regulation was the best way to address that. And all of that benchmark research was provided in your packet. So I have some more information, but first, I'm going to actually start with the discussion questions, so we can keep our minds on the prize as we go through my next set of slides. So first, does the commission support solar in all, some, or some locations, whether that's residential, commercial, or city-owned properties within the City of Dublin? Should the regulations vary based on land use? Should we have different standards for residential versus commercial? Should we have different standards for rooftop-mounted equipment and ground-mounted equipment? Should both be permitted in residential and commercial applications? There are lots of ways to shuffle these cards. Should use-specific standards regulate the location of solar panels, recognizing that this could impact the efficacy of the technology, but also needing to balance the integrity of Dublin's community character? And then should there be guidance for the installation of solar panels regardless of location to meet the community's expectations for high-quality architecturally-integrated technology? So I'm going to go through a couple of examples. These are just precedent images of things to get you thinking about what's out there. Some of these are good examples, and some of these are bad examples, and I, I won't identify which are which. It really is meant to provide something for you to respond to. So in regards to commercial buildings, a variety of options are available, right? On a flat roof, these solar panels can be treated as a mechanical structure and be fully screened behind a parapet, and would not readily be visible or alter the character of the community at all. A commercial building with a pitched roof, these solar panels can no longer be screened as a mechanical, so it becomes really a value judgment. Is a solar panel on a street-facing facade of a commercial building appropriate? Which do we prioritize, sustainability, as we look ahead to 2035, or balancing that with the character of our community? Additionally, there are architecturally-integrated panels specifically used in commercial applications, right? These could be appropriate particularly within the Bridge Street District and the West Innovation District, whether this be on, you know, parking structures or other structures with larger private areas like hotels. So as we look to commercial sites, there are a variety of site consideration and implementation options. Just two examples would be, right, a solar farm. You know, is this something that the City of Dublin would be entertaining of in the West Innovation District? Is there a place for this type of use in our community? Also, solar vehicular canopies. These are obviously very popular in other regions of the United States, but are just as important in central Ohio, the upper photo being from the City of Dublin. So here are some examples of residential homes, right? Almost every residential home in the city has a pitched roof. This is a result of the residential appearance standards we have in the code. So similarly to commercial examples with pitched roofs, there is no way that you could successfully screen a panel, and it would need to be visible to the sun. So we see a couple of different installation examples here. Some are on both the rear-facing and the street-facing facade. Some panels are on homes that have tan roofs. Some homes, some panels are on homes that have black roofs. The lower left-hand corner is an example of items that Mr. Schneer and Mr. Fishman have discussed in regards to the Tesla roof shingle solar tile. And so you'll see, you know, some of these are more slim, some of them are elevated, some may have exposed electrical, some may not. So just a number of things to consider. These are examples of residential accessory structures, right? So accessory structures are anything that's detached from the home. The one on the right-hand side is, right, an outdoor trellis canopy providing shade in the context of an outdoor pool. The one on the left is a detached shed. This is much more of a retrofit application where, you know, you might, you might have had a homeowner that was interested in pursuing this on their own. You can see some exposed conduit in that scenario. You can see some exposed conduit in that scenario. Additionally, residential sites, this is something that would be important to consider, whether or not we'd want to permit residential zoning districts to have site installations within the city of Dublin. These are of two different scales, but both you can see in relation to a two-story, single-family So with all of those inspiration images, just concluding back to our questions, is the commission, preliminarily, of course, we won't hold you any of this since it's an introduction, supportive of solar in residential and commercial districts? Should these regulations vary based on land use? What are appropriate use-specific standards in order to balance the efficacy and the community character? And then any, any recommendations on mechanisms to begin to develop this, whether it's code, guidelines, et cetera?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Schneer, I'd like to start with you, if you're up for it.
This is, this is a very easy one that's not very easy at all, because the very easy one is, answer is, geez, nobody likes any of these pictures, you know, so we don't want any of that here because it's just, the aesthetics are just, you know, shocking. However, it's, shall I say, hypocritical to suggest that we just come down all that hard and prohibit some of these uses when we also have, when this city is all about advanced technology and we have sustainability objectives and goals, which arguably would be very difficult to meet without support of this. So we're tasked with trying to, you know, thread the needle here, which I find will be, you know, somewhat difficult. I think we could, if you took all those pictures and put them on a continuum, you know, we could probably get some agreement that this is less egregious than this, and, and we actually might all be okay with this one, but none of the other ones. So I, I don't, I don't have an easy answer. Going through the, the questions, I would say that, the devil's in the details in that I'm supportive of, of advancing solar energy uses. And I think we can do so, with respect to number four, I think we can do so with, without a heavy hand if we do have guidance with respect to installation. I think that's appropriate. Approved, I don't know if we, how we approve contractors, et cetera, but that kind of, maybe they're just design guidelines, and that might be one way to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Fishman?
I have to echo Lance. I think that, that it's coming, so we've got to accept it. And, and I think that Lance said it best. I think we're, it's a fine line here, but I think it, it's much easier to support on, on commercial development, obviously with flat roofs, nobody sees them except from an airplane or, or, you know, whatever. And, and, but, so, so I think it's coming, and I think there should be guidance and, and restrictions, and we just, I can just see those in the historic district. That would be great. So, so, but I think the technology is flying, just like the Tesla when I showed you, you know, I'm glad you got that picture. I mean, that's, that's probably the most appealing residential look of any of the, the solar panels.
Lance gets all the credit for that photo.
What?
Lance gets all the credit for that photo. He sent me the link today.
I sent her a link. Oh, it is? I should have sent the link. I, I, I saw it. But anyway, so, so I think it should be regulated, and I think that, that we should be concerned about aesthetics when we do it, but I think it's coming, and I think that we embrace technology here, as Lance said, and I think that since we embrace it, and, and, and I think that we shouldn't discourage it, but I think it can be done with aesthetics. I, I certainly wouldn't want to see a big solar panel on, on an historic building in old Dublin, but there's probably going to be a way, and, and the technology's flying with this stuff. It's just flying. Pretty soon, you, you won't be able to tell it from shingles, and you see how close Teslas look. So, so I think that we've got to be patient and, and embrace it, but, but, but there should be a lot of guidance, and when it can be hidden, the problem with it is, you can't put trees around it. Then it doesn't work, okay? You know, my whole life has been trees, you know, and hiding ugly things, but you can't, you can't do that with that. So, so I kind of agree with Lance. I think that we're going to embrace it, but I think we should watch it very closely. I, I can tell you a quick little story. Before I moved to Dublin, I, I lived in a place called The Gables, and, and that technology was just coming in, and the guy two doors up bought this thing, mail order, solar panels to, just for his hot water heater. And that thing was giant. The houses aren't that big. And the thing was not only giant, it had to be tilted, so the thing stood up. And so we got in the habit, we lived there four years, when somebody wanted to find our house, we'd say, we're two doors down from the solar panels, you know? And they're, they were so ugly. And so, so I think we're way past that. I think so, I think we should definitely make aesthetics important, and I think when you're doing a flat-roofed commercial building, that's where, where there will be a huge advantage, and, and all that square footage, and, and I, I think that we can get by with that. But I think on single-family houses and places where we care about aesthetics, I think we, we have to give people a lot of guidance, so.
Ms. Fox?
Well, number one, yeah, I think we should have them in all locations. I think that solar will become a right like a utility is, and people are going to want to move to it, and, and I agree. I think if we're going to be, this is, the technology is changing, and if, if someone wants to put solar panel shingles up, that should be allowed. We put, we're using solar at the golf course of Dublin to run our aerators, and they're pretty good-sized solar panels. So, I mean, it's going to be used for everything. So yes. Should regulations be based on land use? No, I, I think we should allow technology to lead us towards wherever. I think that in our code, maybe it's important to talk about the fact that we understand that we're in the infancy of solar energy, and that we are embracing it, and that we will allow it, and that we, and I think we need to do our research. There's plenty of fodder out there of municipalities who are doing this. And say, we have a concern, we are a tree city, we, we have, we are proud of the aesthetics of our community, and that in embracing solar, we are going to try to marry those two things, and that, but that we are, we will incentivize, we will encourage, we will, we will do whatever's necessary to embrace it. And, and then I think you build from there. So yes, I think we should allow this to, to take its path, but with the caveat that we have concerns and that we will try to manage around them.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Way?
Thank you. Yeah, so I agree with everybody else. I think the 2035 vision for Dublin should declare us a solar city. And I, I think somebody said embrace it. I think we need to embrace it. And it isn't just, it's here. And the, the tech, you know how fast technology changes? Technology's changing in regard to solar faster than we can move. They now have windows, like residential windows that are solar panels.
Right.
So, you know, and you wouldn't even know that it's a solar panel. So I think one of the things we need to understand is, what are the technology options available to us? And I, I think we saw a whole bunch of great examples, but what else is out there that we're not seeing? And we saw a lot of old technology, and I, I think the new technology is, I mean, I, I think at some point it's going to be in the paint, and it's going to be solar reactive, and it's going to, but, you know, the thing right now that I, you know, there's a, a house in my neighborhood on, on Terra Hill that has solar panels. So they're here, right? And, and I've read a poll about solar panels, which I'm very interested in them, and, you know, there's a lot of horror stories about people doing these deals with solar companies, and they come and they put them on your house, and, and then they don't hook them up to the grid, you know? And they say, oh, that's somebody else's proof. And then the, the homeowner is like, what do I do now? So I think, you know, with the city of Dublin embracing it is that, that this is a citywide grid, if you will, and the city needs to help people, especially homeowners, embrace it, and how do they use it, and make them feel comfortable that it's a really good investment. And, and as we were talking about the 2035 plan, I, I almost wrote down, but I didn't, was, every house in Dublin should have a solar panel on it. Because I thought that was probably way too far out there. But I, I think we need to be as open as possible, and we should embrace all the new technologies because the comments about, well, we didn't like all those pictures, right? Well, that's just the old way of thinking about solar. And there's probably going to be some of that still around, but we should be pushing for the latest technologies and the latest ways of, of dealing with solar. I think our planet needs it and deserves it, and I think we need to do whatever we can to support it. So our standards need to be written so we support it, and, you know, there's a lot of solar that we probably don't want, like, you don't want freestanding solar things in residential neighborhoods, but we have, I think we have to deal with things like that. But I think you can integrate solar in so many different ways that that old technology we don't need to rely on. So I, I think, I'm like, I'm 100%, 150% in favor of solar, and whatever we can do to support it on, for it.
So personally, I'm good with one and two. That's the what, you know, should we allow? Yes. Three and four, I, I say yes. There should be guidance, and we should regulate the location. We don't want our front yard full of solar panels. Kind of defeats the purpose of, you know, some of the other standards. And so I'm good on a yes on one and two, and a yes for the, should we stay true to Dublin's high standards in three and four. So looking back, oh, yes, Mr. Schneer.
One more point that just sort of came to me, satellite dishes. You know, the regulation, you know, they were the, the big, you know, originally the big K-band dishes, and Mierfeld was like all over that, and there were a lot of restrictions on that, and why does anybody need to have it? And sort of started to tell, and it didn't, it, it took, you know, it took a court, courts to determine that basically it superseded zoning laws. And we may, it may end up where this does become a right, that we, so we do want to be ahead of it and be as progressive as possible so that we're on the offense and not the defense.
Mr. Way?
I just have, and one other point is the, Ms. Martin mentioned, you know, keeping this as an accessory structure, solar as a, I'm not sure I agree with that. I don't think this, solar panels or solar is an accessory structure. I think it should be integral. It's going to be an integral structure with other structures, and so we, we shouldn't think of it separate.
To me, I, I see two types. The integrated, it's part of the structure. The separate, it's 18 inches off, it's an accessory structure like an air conditioning unit would be. And that's to me. So if it's integrated, if it's with, you know, four inches of clearance, that's one type of solar. But if it's 18 inches cantilevered over, it's a different thing.
So that's something then that, that needs to define, defined, I don't think, again, I just don't want it always to be thought of as another thing. We have to look at it.
Correct.
That's an excellent point. You know, in, in, in Dublin, I think you have to have a, a permit to, to change a water faucet, okay? So there, there's no reason why you shouldn't have to have a permit to put up a solar panel. Not that you would deny them putting it up, but you could show them, tell them where to put it, how to put it, and, and, and so it aesthetically blends in. And I, I have a lot of faith in the technology. I, I'm like Kim, I think that in a few years, they'll be, they'll have windows, they're going to have shingles. As I said, Tesla's already out the shingles.
Yeah.
And I, I'm kind of looking forward to be on this board when somebody comes up here and says, some developer says, well, we can put the good kind on, but it's not feasible for the development. We're, it's, it's, we have to use the cheap ones and sit up in here because we, we won't be able to sell the houses. And we'll say, no.
And the only comment there is, I want to be careful. Tesla's roofs have been around for about a dozen years. They're still not perfected, and they're definitely not prevalent. So when we're talking solar right now, we're talking solar that's kind of the traditional, even like this Sun Tegra that's a competitor to Tesla that looks nowhere near as good as Tesla. The technology isn't quite there yet.
But there's other people besides Tesla working on those, by the way. There's lots of companies doing it.
Yeah, but they're all working on it. So right now, if we had applications coming before us today, it would probably be kind of the older style, and we've seen some of that around the city. So I think we need to go into this, not just looking into the future, but if someone were to come forward now, what would we, number three and number four, how would we hold those standards? What would we allow? What would we want to live next to? What would we want our neighbors to live next to, et cetera? And treating the integrated as a different animal. If it looks like shingles, then we treat it like shingles. If it looks like a ground-mounted solar panel, we treat it like a ground-mounted solar panel.
Well said. So I think that, I think that it kind of is like when I moved to Mierfeld, the, the only storm door you could buy is ugly aluminum storm doors. Some people old enough to remember those storm doors, and we required them to paint those, which isn't a great idea, by the way, against the paint pills. But, so we did the best with what we had. Now today, you, you have a lot better technology. I think that's going to happen with, with solar panels. Well, they, they might have to hide them a little more, they might have to do things differently with them. As the technology gets better, then we can, we move with the technology.
Agreed. Mr. Way?
So the other thing that we haven't really, that this doesn't address are incentives. Would we actually grant incentives for people that?
That wouldn't be an us thing.
What's that?
That wouldn't be an us thing, that would be a them thing.
I'm thinking, though, in terms of develop, you know, develop, you know, projects, that if you integrate solar, you can increase your density, or?
That's not a planning and zoning commission that has to come as.
Yeah. I think what Kim is talking about is a, like a density bonus in a zoning code.
Right.
But again, that would be a code change, right?
And this is a code change as well.
Which would be a legislative, not an administrative.
Correct. So like for this solar panel item, you would be making a recommendation to city council, right? We're having a collaborative conversation, similar to this penalty code, we'll eventually bring language before you to respond to. It won't be as quick, we'll probably have some back and forth on various drafts, so we can begin to perfect that. But yes, it would be a code amendment.
But, and if we see that coming at us, right? And if, if it comes down from above, then we, we have to take those into consideration as we're reviewing cases, right? I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, that it's that whole part of it.
Yeah.
And I'd like to actually see that.
Yeah. I mean, planning and zoning can make recommendations for any sorts of things when it comes to land use. And if that's something that this, you know, commission decides that they think is worth the conversation and recommendation to council, they can always recommend.
So if we could ask staff, because I, I think that there's consensus among the commission that this is something that we'd like to see in the city, this is something that we'd like to incentivize, so if, in the communications that happen with council, if as one of those communications, it could be brought before council, whether that's through our conduit, who sits on our commission, or through staff, that this has come up, and see if they, it warrants further investigation, and we can draft something and send it back to them for legislative approval.
Yes, definitely. And I guess the only other thing I would add, and you don't need to answer this question this evening, but it's in the same vein as Mr. Way's discussion, is would you require it on a large format, commercial building? So say your building has a footprint of over 20,000 square feet, or a roof space over 20,000 square feet, would we ever put a requirement in that 50% of that roof space is required to have alternative energy integrated into it? So just things to think about.
And where I sit, I sit less on the required and more on the incentivized. I'd like to see that we get a little bit more strict in the language, because we hold a high standard, and a lot of times we're trying to find ways to make the code work with what we want, and we're kind of stretching, we're interpreting differently so that the vision matches the application. And so if we're stricter in that language, then that gives us the freedom to release some of that. Right now, our code is the minimum requirement, and so a lot of times we get the minimum requirement, and it's hard for us to get really what we're looking at. If we expand that, then that gives us the freedom to go back to what our minimum really is what we're looking at.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the discussion.
Certainly. All right. So we have public comment on this, on the... So we have public comment on this, on the, I wouldn't think normally in administrative requests, we would have public comment, but on both of these we have.
Yeah, the public would be permitted to comment if they had anything.
All right.
We've not received any public comment.
Perfect. All right. Do we have any communications for this evening? Just for what it's worth, that city in Indiana, Carmel is the name, I'm going to be there tomorrow, so if anybody wants me to drive around and snap some photos to see if I see Carmel, I mean, is that where you are?
It's, it's the Dublin of Indiana.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I haven't been there, so I'll be right around the corner, it's 20 minutes away from my office.
Check out their city hall and their whole civic center. It's all brand new.
Oh, speaking of.
And the nickel plate.
Trail, too, is really great. The nickel plate trail.
I did have one set of images that I just wanted staff to see and the rest of the commission to see of a large-scale retail plus office plus big box, and they did it really well in California. And I, I hadn't remembered the name, and I finally went on a map the other day, and I was about right here. It's called Eldorado Hills, and it's in California. Eldorado Hills, it's near Folsom. And it is, the way that they did it is amazing to have, they have a movie theater as a kind of a box end, and then they have double-story, it's walkable, the lighting is perfect, the open space, the water, they have a wet basin that's turned into like a recreational area, and it's just incredibly well-done, that larger scale. And I know, I look down Sawmill, and it's a, a little groany. I look across the Cardinal Health. The fact that we can put single-family residential immediately adjacent to something with a parking lot that large, with a building of that scale, and make it work with the green space and everything else is, is pretty remarkable. And so this was one that I've been thinking about for the last probably two and a half years, and I finally remembered to bring images, or to look up images.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate you sharing that, and I'll definitely take some time to look at that. In your OneDrive folder, I have added an urban design folder, so if you have inspiration images, you're welcome to save them there. Mark Sublak had previously shared images with staff of Rose, Rose Marie or Rosemary, Florida, and so I saved those images. You should all have access to them in your urban design folder. There's not much in there, but I kind of envisioned it to be self-populated, right? We want to know what you think, so we can begin to meet those expectations.
Perfect. And they have concerts on the property, too. That's one of the reasons I was out there, but it's just beautiful. All right. Seeing no other need for community?
Yes. A couple other things.
Oh, yes.
So first and foremost, special meeting scheduled for Monday at 1:00 PM, that's a site visit. I know we had a lot of folks RSVP, but I just want to get a count here to ensure that those of us that are available are coming. If it ends up being such a small turnout, potentially it's not a public meeting, so that's really what I'm trying to discern, is do we have a public meeting or do we not have a public meeting? So Lance, you'll be there? Jane will be there?
Yes.
Yes.
The 18th.
Yes.
It's at 7281 Sawmill Road.
Sawmill and Bright, is that?
Yes. Yeah. Or you can come to the office at 12:30 and we'll drive you.
12:30 here?
No, 5200 Emerald Parkway. 5200 Emerald Parkway?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Where are we going to meet at the site? Sawmill and Brightwood?
Yes.
I'll meet you there because I have something going on.
And that's my preference, but if you need a service. Okay.
I don't know that I'll be able to make it.
Okay, so.
I know I responded for the Friday, but.
Totally fine. I just want to make sure we're accurately representing it. So Rebecca's a no, I, Kim has a conflict, he'll be in New York. So we have three members that are available. I've not yet heard from Mark, and then Leo I'll have to double-check with. Okay, so.
Nikki, and we're free to go there by ourselves. I just, you don't have to go as a group, so just.
Yes, you are absolutely welcome.
Exactly. Weekend trip.
Yes, you are welcome to go by yourself at any time.
Take pictures for me at the Taco Bell.
Okay. That's the only thing I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Any other communications for this evening? If not, ladies and gentlemen, thanks for spending a Thursday.